Good evening and welcome to the September 2nd Federal Way City Council meeting. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance and would Mr. Dick Mayer please lead us in the pledge?
Please join me if we pledge allegiance to our flag.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome. Thank you very much for coming tonight. A great turnout, that's what we love to see. Before we get any further, Deputy Mayor Burbidge, would you, do you have a motion?
I do, thank you. I move to amend the agenda for this evening's meeting to add a presentation by interim Superintendent Sally McLean as item C under section three, presentations, and renumbering the remaining items in that section.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to add the item for Superintendent McLean. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll hear from Ms. McLean. All right, now, moving on to presentations, we have recognizing the Special Olympic Athletes' Accomplishments, Mr. John Hutton, our Parks Director.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbidge, members of the city council. It is my pleasure to be here tonight. One of the biggest sources of pride of leading such a fine organization as our Parks and Recreation Department is our commitment to all the people in our community of all abilities. And one of the things that we're most proud of is our inclusion program, and tonight we're here to honor our very special Special Olympics athletes who have done amazing things for many years in the state of Washington, and we could not be more proud. And I'd like to introduce to you our Special Olympics Coordinator who does many things, but Special Olympics is one of her things, and that is Ms. Sharon Boyle. If Sharon could come up real quick.
Hi, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for having us. The City of Federal Way's Recreation, Inc., Special Olympics is so proud to say that we have a very well-attended Special Olympics sports program. This last 2013-14 year, the Federal Way Thunder had 75 bowlers in our fall bowling program. We had four basketball teams. If you could stand up if you were on the basketball team, one of which qualified, a unified team which qualified in advance to the state meet and brought home a gold medal.
Wow.
We had three soccer teams, all who went to state. If you could stand if you were on the soccer team, and they brought home two bronze medals in a sixth place. We had 23 swimmers, if you're a swimmer, stand, who went to state, and they brought back many medals, I can't tell you how many. And we also had two of our athletes who qualified at that state meet to apply for national competition. So, we haven't heard back on that yet, but we're kind of waiting, that's exciting. We had 14 track athletes and 11 who went to state and brought back many medals. Any track athletes? We had two softball teams, one who attended the state meet and received the silver medal. On softball? Stand up. We had a great year, and we're very proud of our Federal Way athletes, as well as some of our great coaches who are here tonight that I'd like to recognize for all their hard work as well. You can raise your hand or stand. And we're just really excited for next year, and thank you for having us.
Thank you very much. All right, so you guys may want to stick around, we've got some, on that front, we've got some stuff we want to announce later on in the meeting. Police chief citation certificates, Chief Wong.
Yeah, come on up. Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbidge, and members of the council. It's my pleasure tonight to recognize and present the police chief citation to several individuals from the police department, as well as from our community, for rallying to assist a crime victim who was in the process of moving to Federal Way from Arizona. On August 13th, Ms. Emroy, who's pictured here in the center, nearly lost all her possessions when her 20-foot U-Haul moving truck was stolen from a motel, including the remains of her late husband's ashes. The items in Ms. Emroy's stolen U-Haul included furniture, electronics, family photo albums, essentially everything that she owned. I'm pleased to report that since the theft of her vehicle, the vehicle has been recovered. I would like to highlight the excellent work and compassion of our department members, local charitable and business organizations for stepping up to quickly work together to make a meaningful difference for Ms. Emroy. This is the type of thing that makes our Federal Way community a great place to live. I want to thank the representatives from the following agencies, Heart Insurance Agency, Multi Service Center, Deseret Industries, for partnering with the police department staff. Collectively, the representatives from these agencies who are present tonight provided a couch, a bed, a television, lamps, dishes, vouchers, and other items to get Ms. Emroy back on her feet. The picture here, Lieutenant Ray Bunk, Officer Sean Warwick, property evidence technician Johnny Hernandez, and Officer George Green is pictured here with Ms. Emroy. Here, Officer, Lieutenant Bunk and Officer George Green carrying a brand-new mattress to Ms. Emroy's apartment. And this is Heart Insurance Agency, owner's son and his friends are helping to take a couch out of a vehicle truck. And then here, four of our officers trying to maneuver this large couch into the unit. Four strong men. I want to thank the department staff and other community members who contributed significantly to aid Ms. Emroy when she needed our help the most. I am pleased to present the police citation to all involved. Please join me in thanking these outstanding individuals from our community. I'm going to invite Ms. Emroy to, just to say a few words, followed by Lieutenant Ray Bunk, who spearheaded the effort for everyone.
Thanks, Chief. Good evening, Ms. Emroy.
Thank you, I thank you for having me. I can't really express enough of how much it meant to me to see people stepping up and using some real genuine kindness for my, for my traumatic plight there. It was very traumatic to just lose everything you own, it was almost like having a fire. The truck was found, but nothing of value remained. Just a few clothes, everything was soaking wet. I had to do laundry for three days because they unzipped my luggage and threw my clothes out on the ground and everything. It was, it was a real mess. And I didn't even have a bed to sleep in because they took my mattress, so the police brought me a mattress and a sofa, at least I had a place to sit down, rather than just on the floor. So, I, everybody that helped, Heart Insurance and everyone that contributed to helping me out, I appreciate more than I can ever say. And I tell you, it's just really significant to see a police department step up and do something like that for an old lady. Thank you very much.
Mayor Farrell, council members, this is the cool stuff about being a cop. When we can actually find something, rally behind it, be able to take care of a problem. We, and everybody's not here, I represent obviously the officers, but Heart Insurance, he shook down his kid and their friends to come help move that green couch, I can't even explain to you how heavy that thing was. But we did this all in about three hours. Without the support of the police chief that we have, Andy Wong, who's doing an outstanding job, and that motto that he has, earning the public's trust, that's what this was all about, and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. I see Dan Papke here, Dan? Dan Papke? Come on, Heart Insurance here, is that who, Chief, did you get him up to the microphone here?
Yes.
Dan, thank you so much for you and Sue's help. Go ahead.
Well, I don't see it as being a big thing, but anytime somebody can step up and help out and do the right thing, I think it is the right thing. And I look at all you guys and the job you're doing, and I appreciate it, and I don't want to do what you're doing, and I'm glad you're doing a good job, but when it comes time to do a little bit of something, it's nice to be able to help out, so. We just did a little bit, and we're glad it helped out.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to just take maybe 30 more seconds and recognize the individuals that are here tonight.
Please.
Okay, so first, I'd like to, Kathy Schrock, come on up Kathy. She's our civilian operations manager, she is the highest ranking civilian employee within the police department, so she oversees all of our civilian staff. I'd like to present her with a certificate, chief citation. Next, property and evidence custodian supervisor, Johnny Hernandez, thank you for your help. Next, Lieutenant Ray Bunk, certificate appreciation, thank you, Ray. Next, we have two individuals from the Multi Service Center, Ms. Manuela Jeanette, thank you for all your help. I think it's coming up, and next is Ms. Manju Khorishi, from, also from the Multi Service Center, and then Mr. Dan, President, Mr. Dan Papke from Heart Insurance, thank you very much to everyone.
Don't go anywhere. Ms. Emory, you're still in the back, would you mind, you guys, we're going to have you come up here in just a second. Ms. Emory, one of the things I want to say is, you know, you're absolutely right, and I think the lieutenant said this, the chief said this, you know, this is really, you know, police oftentimes are called in the worst of times, and obviously they were called in the worst of times, but they can clearly make a horrible situation better, and they did. And this really, this kind of thing, I say this all the time, but it's this kind of act or series of actions by the people that are here, that are working for the city, or work here in the city, or have donated a career serving the people in the community, not only by our law enforcement agencies, but Dan and Susan and their, and their insurance company just right down the street. This really feels sometimes like a small town, and Ms. Emory, you're home now, and so this is your home, and we're here for you. And what, you know what I'd really like to do, I'd like to get the council down here, I'd like to get all these people down here, and Ms. Emory, why don't you come on down, get our picture with us, and, and we'll make sure you get a copy of this to, for all your new friends. So, come on, let's get down on the front, in front of the dais.
Glad to help out.
It was a little heavy.
Yes. That's all kind of coming together, like one big family, everybody from a skirt and...
One, two, three.
It's okay to smile.
Sally, thank you so much for joining us today.
Oh, thank you very much, Mayor Farrell, and council members, for giving me this opportunity to spend just a couple of minutes wishing you a happy new year. Okay, what I really mean is a happy new school year. School starts tomorrow, and I do have several things that I was hoping to share with you this evening, but I will do that in a very expeditious manner. I want to thank the city staff, I know I had a chance to personally thank Marwan, but one of the great things about having a little bit of money in the school district, thanks to McCleary, is the number of construction projects we're able to complete in a very short time window, because obviously you can't do most of the construction while kids are in school, and that kind of work doesn't happen with the coop, unless we have the cooperation of city staff. And so, I wanted to say thank you very much for all of the support for the new things that occurred in our buildings within the City of Federal Way. Tomorrow is the first day of school, we have 22,000 students coming to school tomorrow. So, as you're out driving your normal routes, pay attention to walkers, pay attention to school buses and their flashing lights, and pay attention to those school zones that ask you to slow down to 20 miles per hour, so that our kids can get safely to and from schools tomorrow. Another exciting thing that's happening tomorrow, besides it being the very first day of school, and I know the city council and the mayor are interested in this because of all the work you've done on playgrounds in the city over the last year, is one of the amazing things that happens in a community when your professional football team wins a national championship, like the Super Bowl, go Seahawks, right, is they partner with United Way and pick a location in their greater metropolitan area, or their greater area, to come and create a new playground. So, tomorrow, at Lake Grove, yes, on the first day of school, from 9:30 to approximately 12:30, there will be a team of United Way volunteers working on renovating Lake Grove's playground. Rumor has it is that some former NFL players will be there at about 10:30, and then we'll see an additional group of NFL players at 11, where there is a small presentation. So, I would love it if the mayor or any of the city council members have the opportunity to come join us for that activity tomorrow.
Should we tell them who's, should we tell them which NFL football players will be there?
I don't know, it's a secret.
I got, oh, is it a secret?
You got a list?
I did.
Ah.
Do you guys want to hear?
I do.
How'd that happen?
I don't know.
He'll sell it to you.
Tell me, tell me.
Steve Largent.
Wow.
Warren Moon, and Mac Strong.
Okay. Well, Mac's been very present in our community through communities and schools, it'll be nice to see him again.
Yeah.
So.
I hope that's right, I got an email, so.
(laughing).
If it's on the internet, it has to be true.
I'm a little behind with my emails, so thank you. I have two other topics I wanted to talk about tonight. One is a commitment to our community. We are, we are deeply concerned, as are you, about King County's proposal to close our public health center here. Given the timing of our board meetings, we've not yet had a formal conversation about our next steps and actions, but something is scheduled, a discussion will occur at our next board meeting on September 9th. We know that, whether you use the communities and schools motto that schools can't do it alone, we know losing these vital services for part of our population, whether it's our students or our parents of our students, will have an impact on us, and so, we're looking forward to finding a way to work with the mayor and the city council, with King County, to see if we can't find some short-term and long-term solutions together. And I'm mostly here tonight to talk about Federal Way High School. So, this is an aerial shot of the current Federal Way High School property, actually taken on August 31st. So, this is north, here's Pacific Highway, 304th, there's your brand-new roundabout, see, you have a picture of it, and here's 308th. And as you might recall, two years ago, our voters approved a six-year capital levy to provide us with the funds to rebuild Federal Way High School. So, there have been a number of planning steps along the way, many decisions that have been made, and I just wanted to let you know, we're getting ready to embark on construction, which will have an impact, not just on our school, but our, on our community for a couple of years, but we think you'll find it worthwhile. I'm going to take this picture and just put down the sketch of the new Federal Way High School, so you can get an idea of how the property will be used as we rebuild Federal Way High School. You'll notice that the new building is still on, on the southeast corner of the property, it's on a smaller footprint, which means we've gone up instead of wide. The classroom wings that face, I'm going to forget the street now, that face this street, where the new roundabout is, these are three-story wings of classrooms with offices on this hard front along Pack Highway, and your, our Performing Arts Center, not the city's Performing Arts Center, and two gyms rounding that out. Now, how are we going to do all that? We're going to take a little bit of time to do that, because we do have the opportunity to continue to serve kids on this same piece of property while we are rebuilding Federal Way High School. Unfortunately, we don't have an empty building, we don't want to double-shift an existing high school, so we have a very complex phasing plan to follow as we go through construction. Phase one is actually, what we call Phase one is actually started, where we have water detention ponds that are being installed behind Memorial Stadium to take care of water runoff during construction, and then to provide appropriate water retention after the new site is built. We will, at the same time, be moving in portable classrooms that will fill up about half of this field. So, once the, and portables will start arriving in mid-October is the current timeline, and we'll be moving... And we'll be moving in about six portables every single day for about four weeks. You'll notice. And then, this first part of Federal Way, so outside of the oldest part of the building, and the classrooms here, will be fenced off, will be awarding a construction bid on October, no later than October 28th, to the contractor to build the school. And they'll come in and do this demolition, and start building these classroom wings first. And I won't bore you with all of the details over the next two years, just be aware that we will continue to have regular updates with you. Well, it might not always be me, because of our, our, our school board meets on the same Tuesday nights as city council, so this was a rare occasion for me, that I got to take advantage of this opportunity. But, we will keep you informed about this construction as it goes forward. I want to show you a couple pictures, so you get some idea of what the building will look like. And of course, you know, Federal Way High School takes great pride in their colors. We know they are a school of blue. This is, again, that southeast corner. This will be a brick building. In order to accent the blue, we're really going with a gray brick building. And so, this is the side that faces Pack Highway, and this is the side that faces 308th. And again, the classroom wings go down this direction. So, the outside is really a pretty hard surface. And remember, this is facing Pack Highway, and we're trying to keep kids inside a little softer surface. So, this is a kind of, the sense of what it will look like in between the classroom wings, and the cafeteria lunchroom, and all those open areas, where we'll have, I've heard it described as a thunder egg. You know, when you see a thunder egg, you crack it open, and you have all of this beauty on the inside. So, those are a couple of sketches about Federal Way High School that I wanted to share with you. Are there any questions I can answer for the city council?
Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight and talking to us. I'm sure you must be really busy. And good luck in the school year.
Thank you.
Your Performing Arts Center, can you tell me how many seats that will have? 600, 700?
I need to double-check. I'm sorry, Councilmember Honda, I know I know that fact, but I don't want to reiterate the wrong number.
Okay, thank you.
It's somewhere between, I'll send you an email.
Thank you very much. Have a great school year.
It's nothing on the same size and scope as the Performing Arts Center that the city has been talking about and working on so diligently.
Okay, thanks.
Just a quick question here, Sally. Is there gonna be any part of the old facade, the old historic Federal Way High School facade that will be maintained at all?
The, you can't, oh, I don't have any good pictures. So, we will be looking at, the oldest piece of Federal Way is right here, of the Federal Way High School. This is, wasn't the first building. The first building was down here. This was the second building that was built, and this is where the bricked-up entryway is, and the cement Federal Way High School piece. We've done a complete inventory of all of the art and the artifacts in Federal Way High School. It's quite a big book. And so, some of the, that cement plaque, it's probably not cement, but the cement plaque, cement-colored plaque that's in those old bricks will be saved, and it will be remounted in a small replica of the old Federal Way High School, somewhere along the, near the office entrance, as will some of the bricks. The bricks from this, when we get to Phase Two, these bricks will be salvaged for our public, for our historians, for our alumni, and made available. The bricks that are coming out of, the newer parts of the building, will be recycled by the contractor. But, the original, these historic bricks, we will be hanging on to and making available.
Okay. It's good to know that. Thank you. Good plan.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just general thoughts, general comments, more so, that has nothing to do with this. But, I just wanted to say how excited I am to learn that you're the interim superintendent, and just wanted to say thank you for your leadership. I can certainly sense a sense of excitement coming onto this new school year, and certainly appreciate having the chance to learn more about you and work with you. And also, want to say how much I appreciate you, because I know that as an AmeriCorps member, you certainly have taken the time to support AmeriCorps and stop in during each year, just to share a few words. So, just, I'm excited, and I'm excited to hear, and I appreciate this update, and thanks to the mayor for inviting you.
Yes, thank you very much. I very much appreciate you making an agenda adjustment for me. So, I probably couldn't have stayed in my three minutes.
And Councilmember Sephardoson.
Yeah, thank you. I also wanted to say thank you for your leadership, and I'm glad that my kids were able to be part of Federal Way High School. And it's sad to see the building go. And my question is about the swimming pool.
Yes.
What is gonna happen to it?
The swimming pool will be demolished, and actually turned in for a while. It'll be a temporary parking lot while we have to, because we're gonna lose some of this parking lot. So, we have not run the pool since it was given back to the school district.
Okay, and then my other question is about the board meetings?
Yes.
So, they are at the same time and dates of these meetings, or are they...
No, our board meetings are on the second and fourth Tuesdays, but we have work studies on the first and third Tuesdays. Not every first and third Tuesday, but certainly as the board looks at the work they have in front of them this year, I'm thinking we're gonna be using more of those first and third Tuesdays than we have recently.
Okay. And then one more.
Okay, sorry.
I just want, as a parent who was involved in the Teresa Moore's Group, parent engagement, just wanted to plug in that October 4th is the Parents Summit at Thomas Jefferson High School.
Yes, it is.
So, it'd be a great opportunity to invite parents and make sure that there's a great participation in that event.
Yes.
So, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Well, Sally, thank, oh, Councilmember...
Oh, I just wanted, again, thank you, Sally, for coming tonight. I've seen you come in here when we've been in other meetings. And I want to wish you and everybody at the, at the school district the best of luck this year.
We're looking forward to a great year.
Me too.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, as we discussed, Brian and I walked over to, over to the school district and had a meeting with Sally recently. We were talking about the Lakota issue, and our, you know, combined efforts to look for a path forward to turn those areas around. And, you know, thank you for your concern about the public health facilities. We'll, we're working on a solution, and we're gonna talk about more of that tonight. But, we'll, we'll look forward to the school district action as well, as well, it's great to have your help.
And I'll make sure you get that. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, we are ready for the Trillium presentation. Karen Williams, Assistant Executive Director of Trillium.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Also with me is Jessica Lex, one of the staff from Trillium, who works closely in partnership with the school district.
Hi, Jessica.
Thank you. So, it was great to see so many of the athletes recognized tonight, because we are here to talk about supported employment, which I know is probably, jobs are probably important to a lot of them as well. We were invited to speak tonight because we went recently on a tour with the mayor and councilmember Moore, to see some of the businesses in Federal Way who have hired people with developmental disabilities. Work matters to people with disabilities, just for the same reasons it matters to you and I. It allows us to contribute and belong to our community. And an inclusive workforce matters to businesses who value a progressive and strong team. So, today in America, there is 70% unemployment for Americans with disabilities. But, right here in Federal Way, we're changing this unemployment each year with the graduating class. Trillium, the organization we work for, partners with Federal Way School District to help students with disabilities get their jobs when they graduate. And we're really happy to share that the 2014 Employment Transition Program students have a 75% employment rate. So, we're gonna play a brief, yay! We're gonna play a brief video to let you see some of the various public and private sector organizations employing people with disabilities. And if you've ever worked in an office, these tasks that they're doing will look very familiar, and you'll quickly understand how they can add value to the workplace.
Trillium has helped over 300 Washington businesses recruit and train employees with intellectual disabilities. Many of the job placements are clerical and administrative support positions. We helped each business identify routine tasks that are critical to workflow, but may get backlogged, or pull an experienced staff person away from key responsibilities. Companies find workflow efficiencies, cost savings, and improved morale when they hire an administrative support person. Here are examples of the variety of tasks these employees perform for businesses in a range of industries.
And I'm a mailman. I deliver to all different places. I deliver to, to the, my city clerk, all different places, and if the mail is too big, I use this box right here to carry stuff home into the post office.
We look forward to understanding your business and exploring the opportunities where your company could benefit from an administrative support person.
Sorry, there we go. So, now, we are thinking about our 2015 students and the job opportunities that they will have in our community. 13.5% of Federal Way students are in special education, and they will want to grow up to work in their community, where they live and shop, and where their families are. And this slide here shows the percent of people with disabilities who work in their community with Trillium support, versus those who have had to go outside of their city for work. And as you can see, it shows that Federal Way has a great opportunity to help more people find jobs in local businesses. And here is where the city can help. By hiring a student with an intellectual disability, the city will join other Federal Way businesses, like Vision Express, Family Christian Bookstore, and Olive Garden, who, with Trillium help, found a talented and qualified employee, a local graduate. The city can model an inclusive workplace by hiring someone with an intellectual disability, and this demonstrates best practices to the local business community, creating more awareness and opportunity for our Federal Way graduates to find the right job in an array of industries. When businesses employ people with intellectual disabilities, the community is strengthened, economically and socially. And we're excited to help you, as the city, expand the diversity of your workforce. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we're gonna have, maybe have some questions here, but I want to explain, you know, first of all, I want to say thank you very much to Councilmember Martin Moore, who really connected myself and my staff with Trillium and made all this happen. We, that tour was really heartwarming. First, we went to Burger King and met one of the clients, and talked with their manager there. And then, we went over to Vision Express and saw how they had that, how they had things set up there. What was the individual that worked at Vision Express?
His name is Randall.
Randall, that's right.
Yes.
And they had, you know, the clock and the time card, and it was really a great opportunity. And as we were getting this tour, and as Councilmember Moore and I were talking, what we really want to do, and something we're gonna, that I'm gonna be bringing, we're gonna be bringing forward to the council, for probably consideration at the first meeting in October, is a resolution encouraging, and not encouraging, but stating the intent of the city in the future, to hire individuals with disabilities, and have a policy about making sure that we have an inclusive work environment. We have a long history of doing that here at the city, but I think, as Councilmember Moore, and I'm gonna turn this over to him in just a moment, I think we can all agree that, I think it has a lot more weight and says a lot more when you actually put it in writing and make it part of our core policy and our philosophy, that we're going to be actively doing that. So, we're working on that. We're gonna be, we've got Amy Jo, our city attorney, working on this, and it's something that we're certainly committed to, an inclusive work environment. We have a great, I'm gonna have Tracy Hill's talk during my presentation about the Action Club and the inclusion program here at the City of Federal Way. But, we're doing great things, but I think, you know, we can do better in regard to this issue and lead by example. And one of the reasons we're gonna do this is to really lead by example in, as one of the major employers here in this city, to encourage other employers to hire folks with disabilities as well. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Martin Moore, and then, Councilmember Maloney after that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for Trillium for being here. And just want to say thanks to my colleagues and to the mayor's office for taking leadership in this. Put it simply, to me, this is about opportunities for all. I think it's, this is about giving people with disabilities a chance to have a normal life, and to have the power of spending is something I got out of one of our tours. And, you know, this is, for me, this is one of the reasons why I ran for city council. This is one of the more important things I'll be doing as a council in the four years that I have. And I'm just really excited to see this and to fruition, and to really empower people with developmental disabilities, to say that you are welcome here in City of Federal Way, and to have the City of Federal Way take the time to do a, excuse me, a call to action to our businesses. And like the mayor just said, so, in a great way, you know, we can't ask others until we take the initiative and take the step forward. And so, I'm looking, I'm looking forward. I'm excited to work with my colleagues on this resolution. I'm excited to work with the mayor on this, and with Trillium, and other, and all other parties, like Action Club and whatnot. So, we're ready to go, and I'm just really excited about this. And again, thank you for taking initiative on this, mayor.
Thank you, Martin. Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. It was really, it was really nice to see all those businesses that hire people with disabilities. I'd like to ask if the resolution could also include people with other barriers to employment as well, not handicapped only, but just, you know, overall barriers to employment, like maybe they've been homeless, or previous drug or alcohol abuse, that kind of stuff, but they've overcome it, they have challenges. And so, I don't know if you serve that population, do you?
Trillium doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. But, it's fantastic, and so, I just look forward to the initiative, and it's gonna be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Honda.
Excuse me, thank you very much. I was at the Action Club just recently when you spoke about getting jobs. And I know one of the most important concerns that those members of the club have is getting a job and keeping a job. You talk about the class of 2014 and the upcoming class of 2015, so what happens once you've gone beyond the class? You've got, you've had a job, but for some reason, you lost it. How do you get back? You know, 'cause that, when I talk to the Action Club members, that is really the most concerning item that they have.
Yeah.
So, how do you get back in the workforce?
It is a great concern. One thing that we do is we provide long-term support. And so, for our students, as they graduate, they will move on to other job coaches. Besides me, I'm with mostly just the school district. But, those, those job coaches will help to provide service, whether that's long-term job support retention, or whether that is job development, looking for new jobs once, if jobs are lost. So, this is, the county is providing this, this support for the people that we work with, and it's a, it's a great opportunity for people to learn, the community to learn more about people with developmental disabilities, and for our students to be working.
Just also, in pairing with that, I think it's important to understand that our supports go as well to the business, and so, part of supported employment is that we're there to support the employee and the employer. So, whenever a business hires, we're there if they have personnel issues, performance issues, we're there on-call to help them, address them, if they can't figure out through their traditional route.
Thank you very much.
All right. Council, any other, Councilmember Sephardoson.
Yeah. Thank you, mayor. So, as you're helping them with employment, do you also help them with other, do you offer other supportive services, like housing and other type of...
We do not. Our main focus is employment. However, one of our main goals is to help the people that we serve to have a full, happy life, where they are productive members of society, but they also, their other needs are met. So, we can help provide resources, resource referrals with their case managers. So, we don't actually provide those services, but we, we can pass along information.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thanks so much for the work that you do. Thanks so much for coming here. It was a great presentation. It was a great presentation. I echo Councilmember Maloney's comments. And when we have a resolution ready to go, we're looking right now perhaps at the first week in October. And Councilmember Maloney made a great suggestion. If you have any other suggestions about what you'd like to see in the resolution, let us know. We're working on the drafting of that right now. So, and then we'll give you a heads up on when that's going to be, but put the first Tuesday in October on your calendar, and we'll be in touch.
Great. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Proclamation, Constitution Week. Deputy Mayor, Bervich.
Thank you very much. I would like to welcome Sally Jarvis from the Lakota chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. She's present this evening to accept the proclamation. And after I read the proclamation, I'll bring it up to the podium for Sally to accept. This is a proclamation for Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd, 2014. Whereas September 17th, 2014 marks the 227th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law number 915, signed by President Dwight D. Eisenhower in 1956 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th as Constitution Day, whereas celebrations are to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution as we preserve it for posterity, to inform the people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for our way of life, and to encourage the study of historical events which led to the framing of the Constitution in September 1787. Now, therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and city council members of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2014 to be Constitution Week in Federal Way, and ask that our citizens reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 and reflect on our heritage of freedom. Signed this second day of September, 2014, signed by the mayor and council members.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell and deputy mayor and council members. It is my privilege as a member of the Lakota chapter of the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, to accept this proclamation for Constitution Week. The DAR, founded in 1890, is a nonprofit, nonpolitical, volunteer, women's service organization dedicated to promoting patriotism, preserving American history, and securing America's future through better education for children. Our constitution assures us a peaceful transfer of power at periodic intervals to leaders whom we, the people, have elected, and it sets out certain rights of the people. This document is the basis for our government and an important part of the history of our country. The United States of America, that great experiment began by our forefathers when they signed the Constitution in September 1787, endures, due in no small part to the Constitution they wrote. It is only fitting that we take time to reflect on and honor what they did. Thank you for this proclamation, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jarvis, for being here. And, you know, it is, it is actually interesting to note that the United States of America is the oldest constitutional democracy in the world. And, you know, so for us, the Constitution, you know, are documents that almost seem like they're chiseled in stone, but, but it took a lot of effort and a lot of argument and a lot of debate.
It did that.
Where they had to board up the, I don't know if you've ever been back to Philadelphia when the, in Independence Hall, where they literally had to board up the doors and windows to keep those folks in the sweltering heat to come up. I mean, sometimes we have a hard time agreeing on a simple ordinance, but, but they came up with a, with a pure, a document of pure genius, that is, the living document that governs this country and everything. One, only need to turn on the news at night and see the despair and the controversy around the world today to know how lucky we are to live in a, in a country with such a stable democracy. So, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
And now, time to hear from our chief of staff, Brian Wilson, on the future of Town Square Park. As a preface, at the last city council meeting, there was some discussion, a pretty lively discussion, where we're talking about, there had been a, an agenda item to possibly add some playground equipment to our new Town Square Park. And the members of the Public Safety and Parks and Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Honda and also Councilmember Duclair and Councilmember Moore earlier that evening had unanimously come to the conclusion, there were several other council members there, that there needed to be much more of a strategic vision moving forward with the park. And so, after some, some thought, we've got, and some planning and consultation with the council, we have the beginnings of a plan. And with that, you're on, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell, council and citizens. Was asked by Mayor Farrell to address several questions that have been raised by city council regarding the future of Town Square Park. Should Town Square Park remain as a four-acre park? Are portions of the property available for development? And where should more permanent amenities be located? So, first, should Town Square Park remain as a four-acre park? Our answer is yes, but also keep Town Square Park at its current size with the city remaining open to consider potential development that may be on the east and west portions of, of the park. Where should more permanent amenities be located? Mayor Farrell has addressed and retained the services of Nacano and Associates, which was involved in the original planning for the park. And this would be to identify where the more permanent amenities for the park could be placed on the site. That planning would include amenities and costs and would also be subject to review and approval by the Parks Commission and council. Some of the design amenities that we're looking at are a shade and shelter structure for the picnic area, children's play area, including a two-bay swing set, children's spray park or some type of a water feature, adding trees for shade, restroom facilities, storage, and park lighting once power is secured to the site. Another question is, are portions of the property available for development? And as had mentioned, yes, we want to keep our options open for that east and west side of the edges of the park, and then place more permanent amenities in the center of the park. We have retained Nacano and Associates, and they've presented a tentative schedule to do this planning work, starting on September 15th as the project startup. September 29th, present three conceptual alternatives for the city to consider, and on October 15th, the final concept design is presented to the city. So, in summary, we recommend to keep the park at its current four-acre size. We would remain open to development options on the eastern and western edges of the property should those materialize, and then forward a plan for permanent amenities in the center of the park to the Parks Commission and the council for consideration at a later date.
All right. Counsel, are there any questions regarding this? Councilmember Selsky.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Farrell. Thanks, Brian, for the, for the update. One of the things that I've seen, and I'm sure we've all seen along the way, is in town parks, center parks, town squares, are veterans monuments, veterans memorials. And we know we have a group that's been working on this for a period of time, trying to locate one in the city. But I'm wondering if we could also look at maybe setting aside a little bit of that property somewhere for a veterans monument, nothing big, nothing extravagant, but something we could rally around for the veterans in the, in the Town Square Park.
Yeah, Chief, Councilmember Selsky will relay that information to Nacano, and in fact, it's a great, Chief, what you were going to say?
No, I was just saying, that's, I'll relay that to Nacano, and we'll include that in the planning scope.
It's a great suggestion. Oh, Councilmember Duclair.
Yeah, I want to thank you for, you know, hearing some of the concerns that I think I raised in the committee, because I really wanted to know what we were going to do with this. We always talked about having a park down there, and I'm excited that we've decided that we actually are going to have a park and we're going to do something with it. And I think that will help actually get development around it, especially residential development, because if they've got a park right there that their children can play in, we'll probably, we might even get younger families moving into the downtown. I think that's something we wanted to have in down, in the downtown area, not just all business, but we wanted to have residential too. So, this is very, very exciting. And I'm glad to see that the council's going to take action on it and that we are going to start moving on it. I don't have that much longer on the council. I'd like to see something get done in the eight years I've been here.
Well, we approved the PAC, and now we're doing this. But, but I can tell you this, that one of the things that I wanted to do is our new economic development director, Tim Johnson, starts on September 15th. And he was just in town for a week, and one of the things we did is I, I've been, you know, this whole idea of was the four acres going to stay, all a park, was it going to remain, you know, or were we going to develop a piece of it? And so, I did have the opportunity to bring Tim out to the site and had him vision, and that was very informative as to how we move forward. And I think I've shared that with several of you individually about some of the really exciting ideas, and it really kind of forward-looking, assuming, I mean, he really thought that you want to keep these four acres together, but maximize, you know, you want to leave the door open in case something just walked in the door. And he had some ideas about really kind, almost kind of a promenade that we could start working toward to create a real sense of center and synergy in our downtown. So, very exciting. I think the key thing is flexibility. We don't want to like, and I think that's where, where I really want to thank, you know, Chairman Honda, Councilmember Duclair, and Councilmember Martin Moore, about, and all of my colleagues here in the council, to be able to say, you know, you need a plan. And while we do want playground equipment, we want some trees, you've got to have a pathway moving forward. So, thank you very much for that. So, more to follow. And I could just say, remember how hot it was this summer? Imagine next summer where, you know, in our downtown core, we had 900 people at our last Town Square Park. Bruce Honda, the unofficial photographer for the City of Federal Way, who's in the back of the room there, Bruce took that picture. And you guys, you should have seen how beautiful it was, especially when the sun was about to set and the, and the moon was over the mountain, and 900 people, or thereabouts, kind of settled in for the evening for a big movie. By the way, we're having another movie this Saturday at 8:00 at night at the Town Square Park. But one of the thing, the things that we're going to be able to do is at that park, hopefully have a splash park, have some shelter and some shade and trees, and it's really become a destination, a true town square, a sense of center for the whole city. But we still want to leave that door open for development that will complement that use. So, anyway, that's what we're working on, and thanks for the shared vision. I really, I appreciate the, the leadership. Councilmember Duclair.
Well, having been raised in New England, Massachusetts, you knew you're in town when you saw the park.
Right.
You knew you were in the town square, because there was always a park, and that's where the meeting place was, and that's where you got information.
That's right.
This feels like we're moving there.
That's right. That's right. Councilmember Honda, Chairman Honda.
Thank you. I do have some concerns about making the whole area a park.
Yeah.
First of all, before we make any real big decisions, I'd like to know how we're going to get the public involved in this, because not only do we want our Parks Commission to have their say, but we also want the public, because it's not our park, it's everyone's park. And I think it's really important if we want the public to buy into having this entire four acres a park, that we listen to what their ideas and their thoughts are. I asked chief of staff when we would be able to do that last Friday, and he said we would, but I, I want a more concrete answer than we would do that. I have a concern with if this property is going to be still on the market, how we're going to market it? Because if I was a developer and I went and looked at it and I looked at our, listened to the city council meetings or whatever, I would think, oh, this is not, you know, those people really don't want to sell it, they want to keep it. And if we do really intend to sell it, then we need to have a marketing plan, and then we need to attempt to, to market it and to sell it. I'd also like to see any play structures that we have that we might purchase to be wheelchair accessible.
Right.
As I, I was just in Alexandria, Virginia, and saw two brand-new parks that have play structures that are wheelchair accessible, and I didn't even know that they existed. They were amazing. I don't know the cost difference. I've asked staff to look into that, but I would like, going forward, for our, I know our parks are all ADA accessible, I know that. This just pushes it a little step farther to make them even more accessible to all children. But I do, I do have a concern, you know, we need to bring jobs into town, downtown. If it's possible, perhaps selling part of this property so we can get some income from it to help develop the property. And, you know, it'll be nice, it'll be great to have a downtown park bit. Those are my, my big concerns.
All right. Thank you. And I, you know, we've been very solicitous of, of the Parks Commission to make sure that they're included in this. I've actually gone there the last several, in fact, we've got our Parks Commission chair, Mark Copeng, in the back. I've been in communication with him about this. We asked them about the playground equipment, about the trees, but I, I like the idea of further inclusion by the public about this. We do have a kiosk at our current Town Square Park. You know, what we want to do, though, is we want to make sure that we, I, I do like the idea, and I think we've got to really reach out to the public, whether it's Channel 21 or the newsletter. We'll probably maybe include some reference to that in the newsletter that's going to go out the first week of October about that kind of feedback. That'd probably be the, the most efficient way. But, you know, I, I think people support, there's a maxim in leadership, that people support what they help create. And so, this is the people's park. It's the Town Square Park, and, and I love the idea, and we're going to do that. So, but we are going to reach out to the commission and continue to that, make sure the council's involved every step of the way. Councilmember Duclair, and then, Councilmember Maloney? Okay. Councilmember Duclair, and then Maloney.
I just wanted to add one more thing. When the council originally bought that area, it was with having a park in mind.
Right.
As part of the downtown redevelopment.
Right. Councilmember, thank you. Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you very much. I love the success that the parks had so far. It's been really, you know, rewarding to see that kind of energy in our downtown. I, too, though, am concerned about having the entire four acres dedicated to the park. I'm not sure, I wasn't here when the, when the land was purchased in terms of what the original vision was, although I, I had thought that from the beginning, it was supposed to be two acres park, two acres development. I could be wrong, but that's, that was my understanding. And the concern I have is that it costs, I believe we paid roughly $4 million for that land, which was at the height of the market. And we've now put in, I don't know how much, 300, 400,000?
No, 275,000. That was the budget?
Less than 300.
Less than 300. In fact, the budget came in under budget. We still have the contingency left over from that.
Gotcha. Okay. So, but still a significant amount of money. And my concern is that it's going to be just, you know, an enormous amount of money spent on a park where we should be spending money on a marketing plan to market the two acres for mixed-use development. And that's really what I, I think we should hold true to, because we, we really need the, the economic direct development in that, in that area, or the development to drive the economy in that area.
Yeah, and this is exactly why we teed this up as a policy discussion. I, you know, clearly we need economic development in that location, but the park, you know, one of the things that when we talked about it, that we wanted to leave that door open for either a 50-50 or some sort of share of, of that, of a park and some sort of development on the property. That's why we, I think what we wanted Nacano's help is to, to move forward in a way in which we could fully realize the benefits of a park while we're not just simply waiting, waiting for some sort of development to come down the road that, that isn't here and that we've been waiting. We bought this property seven years ago. I would also say that the $275,000 that was utilized for this park was from a fund of $2.4 million that had been sitting in a bank account for exactly this purpose for about nine years. So the, the property's been sitting there, it's just a pile of rubble along with the money in a bank account for nine years while we've been kind of going back and forth and waiting. So what we want to do is activate that site and I think that's the idea is that, is that we utilize or best utilize that property, and I'm looking over here at the screen of Bruce Honda's picture of our movie night, where we best utilize that property while still leaving the door and seeing if a, if some sort of development on that site makes sense. But I would say, and one of the things that, you know, what I frequently talk about when I talk about this park, you guys, is I talk about Central Park and I talk about Bryant Park, both in New York City. Bryant Park is on the backside of the New York Public Library and it is, it is, we're often referred to as the town square of, of, of New York City. It's actually where I got the idea for movie night. I know a lot of communities do movie night, but I knew they'd do it there. And I would also say that if you think about the value of real estate in this country, probably the most valuable real estate in the world is in downtown, in Manhattan, in New York City, between the corners of 57th and about 113th where Central Park is. And imagine New York City without Central Park. You know, even in Tacoma where you've got, on the, right there in that, in that, one of the greatest places you've got, right, thank you, Wright's Park. And that's a beautiful sprawling park with a water feature and kids areas. What we're really trying to do in our downtown, and we'll talk about this when we see the plans and we're going to have different options, we're trying to create a sense of center in which people will want to invest. And maybe that's across the street from our mall, from, from our, from our park as opposed to in it. And so this is the policy consideration, but I, I do think we want to leave our options open in case something walks through the door, but we'll have this policy discussion. But that's the purpose of Nacano, to be able to develop this in, in a manner that we can move forward. Stasis and, and leaving it where it's right now is not a path forward, that's just, that's stasis. So, Councilmember Moore.
You know, I think that the only couple of things I want to add is, I'm really supportive of this policy because I think there's a huge opportunity of looking out towards the future of Federal Way, an opportunity for businesses and to partner up with the city, you know, in terms of building around the park. And I think, you know, my vision is seeing people have lunch at the park because they've come out of offices that are surrounded by that area. So I think there's a lot of partnership opportunities in the future that I'm really excited about that I can foresee happening. And so, and the other thing I wanted to comment is to thank Councilmember Honda on her, on her statement with regards to continuing the efforts of making our parks inclusive. And, and as the mayor knows, I've definitely been lobbying him to continue that pathway to make sure that all of our parks can serve all residents. So I want to thank the councilor's comments on that and just state that I'm really excited about the opportunities for this park and it's, it's only the beginning with this park, so I'm really excited, thank you.
All right, I won't quite, I won't quote Karen Carpenter again. Deputy Mayor Burridge.
Thank you. This is a really important discussion and I'm, I'm pleased to hear so many different opinions expressed by my colleagues and by the mayor. And I, I personally like the attitude of keeping our options open to some degree. It's hard to predict exactly what's going to be happening in the next couple of years. I think we're all looking for a transformation of our downtown, of this redevelopment area. We're looking for a transformation of the public spaces, which includes Town Square Park and however much of it remains actually a park, and also of the Performing Arts and Conference Center. When that begins construction and as it, the construction proceeds and is completed, that is going to be transformational in itself. And I think we'll find that the private holdings there will begin to transform also because as has been pointed out, their value will increase and the appeal of those private spaces will increase and there will be greater interest in redeveloping them. So we have, we have a lot to look forward to, but it certainly, this certainly isn't the end of the decision-making or discussion on, on Town Square Park and the other areas.
Councilmember Maloney and then Councilmember DuKlo, do you have another one?
Yeah.
Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you. Yeah, so just to kind of jump on that, in terms of the park, again, I think it's a great, I think it's wonderful and I think we need to keep a park in our downtown core. Again, the, the issue I have is how much money we spent and I'd, I'd like to see if we can recoup some of that. And maybe it's possible to find a, an adjacent area that might cost less that we could spill the park off into or something like that. And, and just to recoup a little bit more of the funds that we've paid out on that land. And it's all kind of in the same area, so maybe it won't even work that way. But again, my, my concern is how much we paid for it initially and recouping, recouping some of that and then also getting the, the development there to drive the economy.
Right. You know, the, oh, Councilmember DuKlo.
Okay. I just wanted to say that I actually had raised the issue of the proposal of the play structures at the commission, the committee meeting of the council because I wanted, I wanted us to have an idea definitely what we were doing with that part, that piece of property. When we bought it several years ago, it was at the height of the economy, it was before the recession hit and so we did pay a good price for it. But I still think we made a wise investment because we have nothing green in the downtown. And having a good sized park down there, as you saw with the movie night, there's many, many things that people can do. And if we put the right structures in there, and that's why I wanted to have this discussion, do we want the whole, how big do we want it to be and do we want to have these play structures? Because once you put play structures in, you can't take them away. Once you build a shelter for people to have a picnic in and stuff, you cannot take it away. You can't say it's temporary when people start using it. A park is a park and that's what you want. So I am all for doing this because it is something that we debated my first year on the council when we were looking at the Performing Arts and Conference Center. We made a decision to combine those and we made a decision then to buy this other property so that we could start that downtown development. We now have the opportunity to move ahead with it. And so I really, I really want something green downtown. I think, I think that, to me, that tells me I'm downtown. And nothing else but green park says this is downtown.
Getting four acres together at one spot in the future could be very, very different. I mean, if it costs $4 million nine years ago, how much is it going to cost in the future? And we've, we've really got a very rare opportunity in our downtown of this contiguous piece of property that now has that grass on it. One of the proposals that we talked to Nacano about, just to know, just so you know, is to grow the size of the green patch. See that, you guys know on the, on the, anybody who's familiar with the park, the northern entrance, the one in the middle of the park? If you were to shut that off and just leave that bottom one on the, on the north, on the southwest corner, you could capture, you could bring, you could close off that entrance, that middle entrance and you could shut that road off and you could bring the grass another 40, 50 feet south and make that lawn area even bigger. And that's the idea and then put your, put your water element where hundreds and hun- imagine, look at that site right there with all those children and people and families. Imagine now, just now, you see where the white tent is on the left-hand side? Just to the right of there would be a water park where kids are playing and, and, you know, a year ago, this was a pile of rubble. This was an empty lot that was fenced up, that was nothing but just gravel and emptiness. And what we want to do, imagine if we can kind of create this synergy and this energy in our downtown and get hundreds of people in our downtown all the time. There, people are going to be knocking down our door to build around it and then we'll have something that, of value added, the sense of center, and that's the idea. But we can, you know, just like the, our Chief of Staff said and what Tim was talking about, on the, on the near side to this picture, along the wall or on the far side where the basketball courts are, development could occur there. And there is a general idea maybe about going a little bit further south, but we want to save that discussion for later. The idea is also, one of the things that Nacano is going to be looking at is perhaps a pedestrian bridge that would connect our new PAC that we're going to spend, we're going to invest in our city, $60 million. Well, it will be spent at that PAC site. $60 million of money that's going to be infused into the Federal Way economy. And so that's the kind of investment that I think people are going to be, are noticing that there's a beautiful view there and there's a great potential there. So anyway, that's, that's the idea. Did anybody else have a comment? Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. So I don't want to put a damper on this discussion, but I do think that the timeline that was just presented to us is really aggressive and I don't see where the public comes into that. And doing any kind of construction during the winter time is going to be iffy and maybe not necessary. If we could take some time to slow down a little bit, ask our public, ask our citizens and our businesses, our families, what it is that they want to see at this park. I, I just think that's a direction we need to go and I'm hoping that, that we can do that. I, I, there isn't a rush to get play equipment there right now. Winter is coming, it's going to rain, people aren't out there with their kids in the rain, so think about it, just think.
Oh, I agree.
Slowing down and getting public involved.
The idea is to have the splash park in place by the time and the toy equipment, by the time the weather turns good next year. And so that gives us a little bit of time. We're also, like I said, we're going to put out a newsletter, that's going to go out to 36,000 homes or 30,000 homes. We're going to, you know, we'll put out an editorial in the paper likely. Where this is being televised and will be, continue to be re-televised, we're going to reach out to the public. And we're not going to do anything without due process and plenty of notice with the public.
You know, when the city was going through the redevelopment of Twin Lakes, the idea is that one day we're going to redevelop that area. There were many, many meetings in which the public was invited into this room where there were big boards where people could put their ideas. That's what I want to see with this. I don't want people to have to come to a council meeting and wait till 8:30 to have public comment. You know, I, I really want us to reach out, make a really good effort to get the public to have a chance to say something.
So it'll be their park?
Their park, yes, it's not our park, it's everyone's park.
Yeah, okay, good point. Thank you, Councilmember Honda. Councilmember Moore?
All right, just a few seconds and bringing people together, investments and transformation, that's what I'm hearing with this park. That's what makes me really excited, that's why I support this. And I'm reminded, I know we like to quote people and movies, "In the field of dreams", I'm reminded of, "If you build it, they will come." And that's what's going to happen and that's why I'm supportive of this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody, good discussion. I like the idea of the public meetings. So Chief, let's work on that, we'll get, and then we'll work with the deputy mayor and Councilmember DuKlo on agenda setting about setting up a study, not a, a special meeting in which we'll have, we'll have, we'll invite the public to come talk about this. Maybe after we get three of the proposals or, but we'll, we'll, let's work on the timing of that. Chief, you got anything else?
No, thank you, I've got the notes on feedback.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, good discussion. Information on city's current tax structure, Ade, Eriwalo, our finance director, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. This information is just for the public, is also available on the county website. So there's nothing secretive about this information. The first page is about the property tax rate by taxing districts within the City of Federal Way. So when the citizens are saying, well, the tax rate in the city is high or low or whatever, these are the entities that make up of the taxing in the City of Federal Way. So you have the city, you have the school district, you have the King County, you have the state, you have the county that charge for flood zone or Port of Seattle, County Ferry District, Fire District, Library and Emergency Management. So when an average Joe is looking, say, well, my tax rate in the City of Federal Way is 15. whatever percent, these are the entity that are charging the city, that are charging the resident, not just the city alone. And this portion that comes to the city is actually less than 9%. So the major share of it goes to the school district, Riley Desert, you know, building new schools and all that. You have the State of Washington, you have the county flood zone, Port of Seattle, the Fire District and the Library. Now also the citizen will say, well, this tax rate is high or low, 54% of the tax is funded on by the citizens. So they're funded to be taxed for 54% of that. This is the distribution, here is the portion that comes to the city out of all of the taxes. This is the portion that comes to the city from the property tax. Also, if you were to compare the City of Federal Way to other cities, the portion that comes to the city alone is 1.39%. If you compare that to all the other entities, actually renting has the largest share. So the portion that comes to the city by itself, if you add the school district to it, I have in here Buryan that doesn't have anything, that means the residents of Buryan, either they belong to Federal Way School District or whatever other school districts. That is why there's nothing in there, the same thing with C-TAC. The total tax, here's Auburn with 16% and you have the City of Federal, City of Seattle with 13.39. But you also see the portion that goes directly to the city. So the tax levy by the school district has a major impact on the total. But City of Federal Way tax rate is still very low compared to other entities in the area. Again, comparing the portion that goes to the city with all these entities, that is the lowest. If you were to take a property that is currently in an unincorporated area of the city, this is the tax that this particular property, that is valued at $179,000. This is the tax that this property owner will pay in 2014. Being in unincorporated area of Federal Way. If this property were to be incorporated into the city, the amount would be $2,029, which is less than what they are paying now in unincorporated area. If that is a property were to say, well, no, I don't want to go with the City of Federal Way, I would rather go with Auburn, the tax would be this. So this is a real property, just, just left out the address and all of that out of there. That was about property tax, this is sales tax distribution. On each dollar that we collect or an average citizen spend on sales tax, this is the portion that comes to the city out of a dollar. The major part of it goes to the state. Another portion, sound transit, King County Metro, before it gets to the City of Federal Way. Then you have the, the King County, the mental health, the criminal justice that picks. So in terms of sales tax, again, less than 9% of the sales tax that the citizens pay goes to the city. So that is the portion that goes to the city out of the major tax. And that is my information on tax to the city.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Maloney.
On the one, on the last slide that you just had up. By the way, thank you for this overview, I appreciated it.
The last one?
Actually, the, the one right before it, actually. Oops. Well, anyway, it looks like it added up to nine, 95% or something like that. Or, no, I can't remember, but it was, it looked like it was not. But it was, it looked like it was, um, not a hundred percent. And so, I was wondering what, where the rest of it went.
This one?
Um, no, go one more. I think it was the sales tax one, right? Um, oops, you missed it again. Well, it's not that important. I just was curious. Go to the sales, the very, if you want to do it real quick. The distribution, maybe? Sales tax distribution? Yeah.
The next one.
This one?
Yeah, that one. And it's nine point five percent, I believe, is, so should it come up to, should it be ten percent total? Or is that just where it ends up?
This, this is nine point five percent.
Yeah, but that's, there's nothing there, so I thought that was the cumulative. I was trying to add it up real quick, but you, you went past it very quickly. So, is that the cumulative, if you add it all up?
If you add all of these, this should be hundred percent.
Okay, um, on the percentage, but what about the rates? So...
The rate is nine point five.
So, that's, oh, I get it. Okay, I understand now.
Yeah, this is the total.
Oh, I see it. I get it. Okay.
This one is the total.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Council, any other questions? All right, and Ade, uh, do you still have, uh, thank you very much for the presentation. Uh, do you have available under Mayor's Emerging Issues and Report? We'll go ahead and get that started now. Uh, do you have good news for us regarding the audit of Verizon Wireless?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, we have, uh, the Verizon, in, they sell calling cards. And in terms of, uh, paying taxes, they did not pay taxes on some of their bene- uh, on some of their sales. So, we initiated an audit, and that audit was just concluded. And, uh, we determined that the Verizon owed the city one hundred and thirty-ninth, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, almost about one hundred and forty thousand that we just got from Verizon because they failed to pay certain number of bills or taxes that they're supposed to pay to us.
That's right.
So, I think this is a good thing.
Hundred and forty, just basically rounding up, a hundred and forty thousand dollars we can just put into our general fund?
Correct.
Uh, Councilmember Selfie?
So, was, I couldn't quite see that. Is that a check they've already issued?
This is a real check.
Good job. Nice.
Let's get that deposited tomorrow.
Yes.
Hey, Deputy Mayor Burris?
Just, good work. Thank you.
Good work. How many more of those do you think there are out there? Let's start a program. We laugh, but he's actually working on it. All right, Ade, thank you very much. All right, I got some ideas. I know I spend that, but, as we all do. All right, so I wanted to share some good news. We just, he actually rolled that out at, at management team today, and, and I added this item to make sure, uh, so that's just a hundred and forty thousand dollars we can, uh, put in the kitty. All right, uh, movie night at Town Square Park, John Hutton.
Thank you again. Uh, we have a movie again this weekend. We are showing Despicable Me Two on, uh, at Town Square Park at eight-thirty. The show starts at eight-thirty. We would like people to arrive by eight o'clock as we are expecting a large crowd. We will have free popcorn and free cotton candy. We will have concessions available at very reasonable prices. Uh, we'll also have kettle corn coming in. Uh, that will be for sale while the others are, uh, free. And we are very excited about it. Uh, it's going to be a great night. I also want to promote a couple of other things. On the thirteenth, we have, uh, a three-on-three basketball tournament scheduled. So, um, a person that I have some connections with, uh, through many years of officiating basketball, uh, owns, owns a business that runs three-on-three basketball tournaments. So, he is going to be running a three-on-three basketball tournament. Like to invite the members of City Council to form a three-on-three basketball team, or two. That would be great. And all members of, uh, the community. Uh, I know we will have some, uh, uh, Federal Way teams out of the city, uh, including, I believe, the mayor has committed to playing three-on-three basketball on the thirteenth, so...
It's on.
It's on.
Yeah.
Uh, so, we're very excited about, uh, the opportunities, and the movie should be a great show, uh, this coming weekend. And we're adding a new feature, uh, prior to the movies. We're going to show a couple of, uh, classic cartoons, uh, kind of take you back to your childhood and, uh, show some classic Looney Tunes cartoons prior to the movie starting. So, uh, we're building on a, on a really cool program. We had nine hundred and thirty-six people, uh, at the first movie. We expect more this time. So, please arrive early. Do bring a blanket. It's supposed to be the warmest day, um, in a while. It's supposed to be up to eighty-six degrees that day, but it will cool off nicely. So, do bring a blanket and a lawn chair. Come early and, uh, tell all your friends that we're very happy.
John, thanks for, uh, you know, John and I were talking, he was, uh, talking about growing up in California and about how, when they used to have the drive-in movies, how all the kids would play under the screen. And you knew that the movie was about to start because they'd show the cartoon before. And so, we're kind of going old-school here, and we're, we're, you know, doing the cartoon first. And, and stuff like this, again, makes the town feel like a small town, so...
Absolutely.
Uh, thank you very much for your work, John.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Again, it's Despicable Me. Uh, it's the, it's the movie that made that, the song "Happy" famous. And what size screen?
I believe it's forty by forty. It's a giant screen. It's very cool, and, uh, it is going to be very impressive.
Which means you could set up a chair in the mall and watch it across the street.
In HD, yes.
At Starbucks, exactly. That's, that's what I'm talking about. All right. Yeah, oh, Councilmember Maloney.
No, that's okay. I, it's just, um, Lydia was too, she had an idea.
Oh, yeah.
Um, we should do, uh, guys against gals, um, basketball, three-on-three.
Exactly.
Says the town.
I'm not that good, but it was her idea.
That's right.
So, I'm in.
Exactly. All right, all right. John, we will see you Saturday.
I will be there.
Okay.
May I make a quick, uh, presentation, uh, very brief, on some other progress at Town Square Park?
Yes.
This will be very brief.
Okay.
Uh, we have made great progress with, uh, our Advancing Leadership Youth Program, uh, led by Terry Hickel. And, uh, there is a student art project in progress, moving along very, very quickly. And the reason I mention this is they are going to be in the park on Saturday afternoon. The student artists are going to be in the park, starting the project, the murals on the wall behind the giant screen, where the screen will be, uh, for the movie. But behind that, there will be a student-led murals, and it is going to be a knock-your-sox-off, uh, program there that is really impressive. In our Federal Way School District, there's over a hundred and twenty languages spoken, and they have chosen the artists, the student artists have chosen to write the word "welcome" in every, um, language spoken in the district. So, all five high schools are participating. Each high school is divvying up the languages. So, they'll have twenty to twenty-five languages to write the word "welcome" in. And Sherwin-Williams Local Business, uh, was kind enough to, to donate all the paint for the project, and, uh, school colors will be behind each school. Uh, they wore their actual school letterman's jackets in to, uh, make the pitch, and Sherwin-Williams immediately stepped up and has matched their paint, uh, to their school colors. So, we're very excited about this opportunity and the program.
Councilmember Osephadoxin.
Thank you very much for that. I'm excited. I've always pushed for young youth, um, students to do this, and especially event, advancing leadership with the connection of that. I'm really excited. And, um, just curious, do you know what languages those are? The twenty-five languages, or where would we see?
It's a hundred and twenty-plus.
A hundred and twenty languages?
I can name five.
Okay. English?
He didn't know there was tests.
It's a long list. I have, uh, it's very interesting. I have all the, the word "welcome" written in all a hundred and twenty-plus languages, uh, on my computer. It's very fascinating. I'd be happy to forward it to you. It's, it's fascinating.
Please, I want to make sure America's on there, so...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You know how this started? Uh, I, I went to go speak with Advancing Leadership Youth, um, and I was sitting in a living room with about thirty, uh, students with A-L-Y. And, uh, Terry Hickel just basically, just the power of a good idea, Terry Hickel said, um, you know, "Is there anything that you, you know, that you need us to work on?" And I said, "Well, we've got three hundred feet of, of blank wall space. It's literally a blank, uh, space." I said, "You guys want to work on that?" And that was, what was that, uh, Chris, when was that? About three months ago?
Uh, yeah.
And, and now within, you know, a very short period of time? And we worked with the Parks Commission, Art Commission, and, uh, now it's going to be a very welcoming, uh, environment. So, pretty cool. All right, thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, um, King County Public Health update. I want to let you know that, uh, we're not going to give any details right now, but I've been on the phone, uh, earlier today with, uh, King County Executive Dow Constein. And over the course of the past several weeks since our last council meeting, he and I have had about four or five discussions. We are closing in on a possible resolution on this, uh, but stay tuned. And I'm, I'm working with the council on this, and at the next council meeting, hopefully, we'll have some, some good news to report. Uh, but it's, it's in negotiations, and we've got a possible resolution. But, um, uh, I, that's all I want to say. We're, we're working very closely with the Executive Dow Constein, and, and we'll give an update at the la- at the next, uh, King County Council meeting. I would like to thank, uh, my colleagues here in the council for your input and your certain care about this. And the Federal Way Mirror did a great job of covering this issue as well. Gave it front page. Kerry, uh, our editor with the paper, did a really good editorial, uh, as well as Bob Regner wrote a good article about it as well. So, I, uh, you know, there's a lot of support, and we're going to do the right thing, and we're working on doing exactly that. So, details to follow, you guys. And as you all know, uh, last week, we got the, uh, the last item of my council report, uh, before I go into one emerging issue. Um, we, uh, got the, uh, we got about two hours' notice about Warehouser's, uh, departure in two years from our city. Uh, but I, uh, what started off as a slow day, uh, after a phone call by my chief of staff at two o'clock, uh, I had completed interviews with Como Radio, the Seattle Times, and the Federal Way Mirror, uh, and then later in the week ended up on Cairo TV. I think, you know, clearly, um, uh, oh, I do want to say that, uh, we're meeting tomorrow. I want to give everybody an update that myself and our chief and, uh, our lobbyist team are meeting with representatives from Warehouser tomorrow about, um, uh, a plan going forward and how the city can help turn what is, on, on the one hand, a setback for this community. But we're looking to make it a, um, a step forward and try to get a Fortune One Hundred or Five Hundred company, a possible college campus, some sort of value-added that's going to be a, a great addition to this community, and, and turn that step backward into two steps forward. So, that's something we're really working on. I want to let the council know and the community know that yesterday, uh, morning, uh, I sat down, uh, for breakfast with our congressman, Adam Smith, and our King County Councilman, um, Pete Von Reichbauer, my friend and mentor, and we're working on possible solutions. And so, um, I've, I've updated the council on that, and we'll keep you updated. We, I, I actually think there's a great opportunity, uh, to get something in this, in this site that is tremendously valuable real estate, prime location. Uh, it's an award-winning architectural, uh, winning facility. And the building, the, the, the business that's leaving there is not the same one that came forty-three years ago. They've just changed their entire model, and we're going to get a business that's on the upswing. So, uh, we're excited about that, and I'll keep you in, in, uh, in the loop. Uh, we also, on that same vein, uh, there's a media organization called Crosscut, which is, uh, an offshoot of the Seattle Weekly. And there, one of their major reporters actually wrote an article on this, and, and I gave him a tour of our downtown today. He was here, uh, in, um, uh, in my office, and then I drove him around the city and told him the exciting news of what we've got going here in Federal Way. So, we've got quite a story to tell. Uh, so, um, uh, that's that. And then, um, I promised Tracy Hills, uh, a, a very brief, uh, opportunity to come before the council, uh, as he represents the Action Club. And, uh, Tracy, uh, you are on.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Um, Action Club has made a committee, and I'm on it. It's for a fundraiser. And each one of you, if you donate fifty dollars or something like that, we can put it towards, um, there's a five-dollar charge. We can use that to pay for each person that's, so they don't have to pay for a year. It's one of the talks that we were talking about. Or we could pay the room fee, which is a thousand dollars, and talk to the community, uh, the community center about paying rent for that room every month. But we got to make the money to do, to do that. So, um, some of the options that we've been talking about is Papa John's. They have gift cards there. That's one of the options. The others was a garage sale, but that was too much, it, there's too much into it. Um, candy sales is more likely what we're interested in doing, or, um...
Trey, can I interrupt you for a moment? Are, are you talking about, are you talking about the charge to use the facility at the community center? The ongoing?
Yes.
And how much, how mu- you know what, what, are you, are you going to stay, uh, toward the end of the meeting, or are you going to?
Yes.
Actually, you guys have to go home. Um, why don't, I, I've got an idea on this. So, you're talking about the ongoing rental of the community center space for the Action Club?
Yes, that, and also there's a five-dollar fee, and we're trying to, um, because we made a treasure person, and we're trying to make funds for that treasure person.
Yeah, we're, we're going to look into this. So, how much does it cost? How, what's the thousand dollars toward?
For, it could be for the room that we're term- currently using. We can use that every month. It's sort of what we were thinking of doing.
How much does a room cost per time?
I heard it's a thousand dollars.
I'm checking on that right now.
Uh, we're... Tracy, we'll take care of this. We're, we're going to call you tomorrow on this, okay? Uh, and we've got your number, uh, right here. The, um, okay, I won't say it on TV.
Also, our president is here, so if you would like me and her teacher, I...
Trey, we're, we're going to take care of this. Uh, well, I'll talk, I, I will call you tomorrow, okay? And I'm going to have, John and I are going to call you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for coming. All right, uh, now it's time for, uh, public comment and citizen comment. Um, and Jenny Hills, did you have something to say as well? And then we get you guys going. Yeah. Yeah, your little boy has to go to school tomorrow.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Hills, and I live at Waterbury Park. And, um, Judge Larson, who is in charge of Action Club, he is the one that got us together for the committee and suggested that we do like candy sales or something to get the, um, treasure person started. And he said, "Whatever, you know, you guys could, you know, spread the word about to get this done." Um, but whatever ideas, you know, you, we could get, you know, whether it's Facebooking or whatever, to get people aware of Action Club, because he wants to push for this, to get open. And it doesn't matter if it's newspapers or whatever. He just wants it to be pushed so we can get Action Club out there like we're doing with Trillium, so that way people are aware that Action Club is the last Tuesday from seven to eight-thirty at the community center. And he didn't know what the cost for the room would be, and it's right now five dollars for the fee, but some of us can't afford that. Like, I'm behind on my fees. So, that's, that's why, you know, it's important for this to get done. The other thing I wanted to say is thank you to the Federal Way Police Department for coming out. About a month ago, our car, a white car, the Crosscut, was almost broken in two by a person in the neighborhood. Um, one of our residents didn't really know who he or she was. But because of that, the cops came out, talked to me. Uh, I just want to thank them for letting this situation come aware. Waterbury Park is a very dangerous neighborhood, and it needs to be looked into with the vandalization. There's several people that go or stay up late, so they watch the vehicles in the apartment complex. And because we have one car with an alarm and the other one doesn't, this person wasn't caught. But, you know, I just want to thank our, my neighbor for, you know, staying up late and watching what's going on in the, in the parking lot. But that, I just want people to be aware that this is a dangerous neighborhood. People are speeding in and out of the apartments, behind where the bumps are. There needs to be something done, whether the police are sitting back there twenty-four hours and watching or whatever. Because all the apartments, all the way down by the CFC and all the way back, that street is so dangerous. People are, you know, coming in and out. And that, my concern is when the kids are out there, running around in the, you know, in the street and stuff, you know, especially our son, he likes to run out, and he almost gets hit, you know? So, we need to find a way to make the neighborhoods in that area in, in the back more safer. So, I just want to thank you guys.
All right, thank you. All right. Lori Gunther, uh, Gunther Hut. Hi, Lori.
Hello, hi. Okay, greetings, uh, Mayor Farrell and council members of Federal Way City Council. Um, I want to first just thank you and the, you know, the community for your attention to these proposed closures to public health. It's been, meant the world to all of us, and, you know, we're still, we're not giving up the fight. Um, in, in particular, just, uh, all of those, uh, here in this room and not in this room and up on front here that have stepped up and spoke out about the opposition to the closings. What I want to say is, um, so I live about two miles from here, and I've lived here in Federal Way for, um, twenty-five years. I'm also a public health... I'm also a public health nurse that works in Federal Way and have also worked, um, in Auburn and White Center, which are the three sites in the South King County that are proposed to be closed. Um, we, uh, there's so many things that I'd like to say, but I was trying to think about what, what, what interests you the most. I mean, there's so, so many things that our nurses do in our community. Um, I thought it was interesting that, um, the Special Olympics was here today and, uh, congratulations to the athletes that still are hanging in there. Um, and to learn another resources, uh, of Trillium. Um, one of the things that, um, that our public health nurses do is work with children with special healthcare needs. And, um, some of these people in here, um, probably have had public health nurses and attended WIC, I would guess. Um, and that's one area where, where, where seeing these newborn babies that are premature, um, to, you know, twins, multiples, um, children with any syndrome you can come up with and, um, other difficulties, um, that, uh, need extra attention. So we're there to, to a lot of times see them in the home and to help that transition into the home and their feedings a lot of times are by tubes and, um, and we can help them access services and, in, in fact, referral is to, in the Federal Way area, like Birth to Three, which is the, the therapy center in Federal Way, is a huge center that we refer to and that helps them transition, um, into the school system at, at three and then get the help they need for physical and feeding therapy up to that time. Um, okay. So I just wanted to say that, um, the other thing that came up was, um, where will people go if there are these closures? And, you know, that's a really good question. There's about 50,000 people that, okay, that, um, will need to go somewhere. And, um, just to keep in mind, they can't just go to Cantor Pierce County. There's, there's a caseload cap on, on, like for instance, just WIC. Um, so there's, we don't know where they're gonna go. We just know that they won't be served. The only other thing I wanted to say is that if people don't have the right, you know, breastfeeding assistance or like what WIC does or, or, um, formula, we see people out there diluting formula. We see babies that aren't gonna gain what they need to and, and we, you know, we all know that that's problems. Okay, thank you for your time.
Lori, thank you very much for coming and I want, everybody on this dais, everybody is committed and now all the city staff are committed to helping. And, uh, so is Dow Constein and I, and, and we're, we're working. What I would suggest is, and I think we've got another commenter here, uh, coming up next, but, um, I would suggest you come to the next city council meeting and watch the local media. So, uh, thank you very much. Patty Furukawa, Stutes, or Stutz.
I also wanted to kind of reiterate some things, um, too, about public health. I am a public health nurse and I've worked both in Auburn and Federal Way for many years, over 30 years, to tell you the truth. And so I know the community pretty well. Um, so I thought maybe I'd tell you a, a true story about one of my clients, just to kind of give you an idea of what we do. I had a client who's 24 years old and she gave birth some months ago to twins. One lived and one died. Unfortunately, she went home to her house and had to deal with this and didn't know what to do. She didn't have a lot of resources. Her family lived in Uganda. Her in-laws lived here, but she didn't have a really good relationship with them. She didn't know a lot of people in the community. She kind of panicked, was really frustrated, really sad, because she had to grieve the loss of the first one. And it took her months before she couldn't even talk about it or even go on with her life. But in the meantime, she had to go to the hospital every day to see the twin that's, was still alive. These twins were born two and a half months early. The baby was three pounds at birth. So you can imagine, having no babies home, trying to figure out your life, dealing with grief and the grieving processes she did, she actually did okay. She asked for help from public health and this is when we went into gear. She needed to know she was doing okay and that she was gonna go through the grieving process, which she did. We talked about it, let her express her feelings, her grief. Few months passed away and the baby came home. The baby was doing a little bit better, had complications, but she did okay in the hospital. When the baby came home, she didn't know what to do with the baby. In the hospital, she had nursing staff that took care of the baby quite a bit. When she got home, that was the real trick, really knowing, what do you do? I'm a mom, but I don't really know how to handle these things. All these questions came up. How do you feed the baby? What if the baby cries? What do you do to comfort her baby? The baby spits up, what do you do? That's when she called us and that's when we helped her out. She had many questions. I'm gonna bring you up to par now. The baby is now nine months old, doing quite well, very, very well. And I saw them last week in the home and I said, "Oh, your baby's doing well. He's growing well, he's developing well, he's doing excellent." And she said, "You know, that's what the pediatrician said to me too, but he, he asked me a question." And I said, "Well, what was that question?" He said, "How did you do this? How did you manage? You were grieving the loss of a baby, you brought a premature baby home, you were going to school, you didn't have a lot of support. How did you handle this?" And her reply was, "I had a public health nurse." And if it wasn't for her to come in to help and answer those many questions I had as a new mom, as a mom with a premature baby and one that died, she said, "I would not have survived this incident." So this is just one of those examples of what we do in public health. And I'm so glad to hear what you're saying, Mayor, that there's a possible resolution because I am concerned if there are no nurses in the clinic, nurses in the field, social workers, nutritionists, they're not there. I'm really concerned about the well-being of the people in this community that we serve. So, thank you for your time, thank you for your concern, I really appreciate it.
Thank you Patty for your work. We don't want this clinic to close, neither does Dow and we're gonna do everything we can, okay?
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Robert Morse, Morrison. And after that, Jennifer Shervinsky and Betty Taylor.
Hello. Jim Farrell and, uh, Jane Burbage and the council. Um, my name's Robert Morrison and I'm concerned about, um, all the activity that's been going on around Federal Way, especially the, um, Art Center pro- project that's working on quite well, but there's a big ditch around the dirt area. So if people look at that, especially when, if it comes to be the parking lot, then some people can break their leg and we don't need that. And, um, then we also could use the, uh, stairwell cleaned off and then we need to lock it off somehow, so nobody sleeps on the steps and get hurt. And, uh, I'm also wondering what happened to the, uh, fire plugs that were going, go down at the end of, uh, the park? The city park on both ends that never got put in?
The what?
The fire plugs.
Fire hydrants.
Yeah, fire hydrants. So when we have like the farmer's market and other vendors down there and if they use power and you want the closest spot to a fire, a fire, um, plug as possible. And, uh, I was also thinking about the parking lot. Uh, there's also another parking lot on the other side of 20th Avenue that used to be a fitness club, but nobody has been using it. And so I was thinking for another parking lot, we could use that. There's a stairwell coming down from there that could be cleaned off and there's a knoll right there, so we can put a, a light on the knoll, so it can lighten up that corner, so it'll be safer for traffic and for other people and all that.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you for those, I'll, I'll talk to our staff about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a nice day.
You too. Jennifer Shervinsky.
She's on.
Okay, thank you. Was she with you guys? All right, thank you very much. Uh, Betty Taylor?
Good evening, um, council members and, and audience. Um, I'm gonna be talking about two, two issues, hopefully if I can get them both in in three minutes, I'll try my best. Um, one issue is, um, I, I too also live at Waterbury Park Apartments and around the corner from my house was a, a camp, a camp t- site for, um, um, uh, it was a tent, a tent, tent, almost tent city. I was not aware that there were 15 campers that were, 15 tents that were residing there. Um, uh, this is a, this, this has been an ongoing issue, um, like the, um, the, the campers have been there for months and, um, so just recently, um, I, I understand that the, the, uh, city of Federal Way, the police came out and it, it escorted the campers out. The owner of the, of the property, um, decided that he was gonna clear the property, clear the land. So he's been clearing the land daily. And so I've been stopping by there like every day, you know, taking pictures and stuff and then he's let me know that the city has been there every day too, taking pictures. So, and it, it would be good if there's, it, it, I would like to see, um, some of the pictures put on the, on the screen, like, like a slide or something, 'cause this is really important for the city. You know, we don't, I, I don't think we want tent cities around the city of Federal Way. We want to keep the city safe. And for me and other residents where I live, it really wasn't safe. It was really aggravating just to walk around the corner and knowing that there's like campers camp behind in the bushes and stuff. Okay, so I have 53 more seconds and let me start on my other subject. Um, we're talking about, um, downtown, downtown, downtown. And everybody knows the song Downtown and I'm thinking about, when you're alone and you have nothing to do, what do you do? You come downtown. So I'm thinking for the city of Federal Way and for our city, we do need a slogan. We need something that's gonna attract the people to downtown. We talk about that. Let's sing about it. Let's do something about it. Where we're doing all this development, can we sing about it? Maybe, you know, I know Patula Clark, okay? Maybe we can't sing Downtown, da-da-da-da-da, but we can't come up with something we need. We, we just really need something, 'cause my head is going Downtown, dun-dun, and it's just only, it's just ringing in my head. So can we just to come up, we need to come up with a slogan for our city. This is our city, we need to sing about the city that we live in.
Ah, you wanna say it? Uh, Deputy Mayor has an idea.
Betty, you've reminded me of something. Uh, several years ago, our own Jet Cities Chorus, a women's, um, Sweet Adeline's barbershop style chorus in Federal Way, uh, put together a rendition of Do You Know the Way to Santa Fe Only Using Federal Way? Do you know the way to Federal Way? And they performed it here at a city council meeting a while back. We, maybe we should, uh, ask them to, uh, come back again.
That's right. All right, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you. Um, that would be fun to hear, I would like to hear that. Um, but just to let Betty know, and I think you, you are aware of the rebranding initiative and that's one thing that will be, um, um, an outcome of that, will be a slogan or a tagline, whatever you want to call it. I, I won't be singing it, 'cause you don't want to hear me sing.
Downtown. Come on, you guys know the words.
(singing)
Oh, there we go.
You know, this is on YouTube, by the way.
This is going downhill really fast.
Yeah, exactly. All right, so, thank you. Uh, I, well said. So we're working on it. Um, I'm not sure you want to hear me sing again, but, uh, all right. Thank you Betty, as always, you're our conscience, so. Um, all right, let's move on to, um, consent agenda. Uh, we've got, um, items A through H. Uh, item A, the minutes for the regular meeting, August 12th, 2014. Vouchers is B. C, monthly financial report, July 2014. D, Lake Haven utility easement for Norpoint Heights Platte. E, Federal Way Municipal Court tenant improvements, uh, long overdue. Uh, item F, uh, fiscal year 2014 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant, JAG. Item G, HUD Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program Funding Agreement. Item H, Parks Property Tax Levy Agreement. Deputy Mayor Burbage.
I move approval of items A through H on the consent agenda. Second.
All right, so it's been moved in second. Uh, Councilmember Honda, do you have an item you need to pull?
I'd like to pull item G, the HUD Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program Funding Agreement.
All right, thank you. Uh, Council, are there any other items you'd like to pull? Councilmember Moore? Oh, you're just going for that microphone? All right. The singing's over. Um, anybody else? All right, all those in favor of items, uh, A through F and H? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, those items pass. Item G, Councilmember Honda.
Uh, thank you. I pulled this because when this first came up, I, uh, was concerned about borrowing money for use to fund the park construction and I remain concerned that we will be, um, this is a loan and I, I just don't feel that I can support it. I realize that the, we're not paying for it out of our general fund, but I still cannot support it, so therefore I pulled it.
All right, thank you, uh, for clarifying that. Uh, is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Burbage?
Yes, I move approval of the 108 section loan, um, moving, moving forward. Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? I see two microphones on. Are you just ready for the vote? Council, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right.
Deputy Mayor Burbage?
Aye.
Councilmember Asafadossen?
Aye.
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Councilmember Honda?
Nay.
Councilmember Selsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember DuKlo?
Aye.
Motion passes six one.
All right. Uh, now moving on to council business. Item A, resolution, creation of Federal Way Economic Redevelopment Zone. Adeya Ararola, our finance director.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. The resolution before you is, is part of making the current area where the park property will reside to make it more attractive for state or grant, uh, funding. And actually, just a few hours ago, for people that we submitted the application for the, uh, for the new market for, they asked us to make sure our program has two items or qualify for two items. One of them is, is it in a redevelopment zone? So what we're asking council is just to classify this area as a redevelopment zone so that we can qualify, or even businesses that are there can qualify for various federal or state grants or support. That is what this resolution is supposed to do.
All right. Council, are there any other questions about this issue? Uh, Councilmember Moore, is that your original? All right, gotta get that hand down, man. All right. Just kidding. All right, Council, uh, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you. Um, so you said that just a couple hours ago, you found out that you got questions?
Actually, we sub- Actually, we submitted our application for New Market to various entities. Uh, and, you know, when they are refusing that application, they just email us back that do your properties located in these kind of areas. And one of the areas is, is it in a redevelopment zone? Which is what this resolution will classify that area to be.
And so is that a requirement in order to get the New Markets Tax Credits?
Uh, I think it's one of the things that makes it, that makes us more eligible to be able to get it.
Thank you.
One of the possible qualifying criteria, so.
If...
Yeah, Councilmember DuKlo?
Um, it's very similar to low income housing tax credit. The more points you score, the better your application. And by doing this, we will get more points. And our, our, our application will score well and get us a better chance to get the funding.
Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. So, so that I can understand this better. If this passes, then we have a better chance of getting the New Market Tax Credits?
It improves our options, our chances, yes.
So why didn't we know that last year? Why, it seems like there's just...
It's an excellent question.
Yeah, we should've known this before. There's information that... Why, why didn't we know this? And why is this new information? Is this, or has this been standard to this application that we just didn't catch on?
Well, we have a new economic development director, and so, um, Adeya, you wanna?
Uh, I think you have new set of eyes looking at these. And, uh, you know, uh, I came on board, we have team on board, and, uh, the, uh, Chief of Staff, we're cracking to just make sure that we, uh, like I just said before, we're actually going after almost about nine entities, not just one. We're going, we're throwing everything just to make sure that these things succeed. Uh, you have, uh, some of us that are new, uh, pushing these, and we're, we're hitting the eye on every angle that we can, just to make sure that we're, you know, our application succeeds.
Councilmember DuKlo?
I, to be honest, I don't think staff knew about it, to be truthful. And I didn't remember New Market Tax Credits until after that application had gone in. I'm the one that brought the New, New Market Tax Credits to the council and to the staff and made them aware of it. I don't think they realized that on that first application.
And our new economic development director, Tim Johnson, who's, who's actually yet to even assume his office, or his position, uh, helped make us, made us aware of this. Uh, Chief, do you have any information on this?
Uh, just to say that, um, you, you know, our knowledge of the process, you know, with, with, with some good coaching and counseling from, uh, Tim and the research that Adeya has done, uh, we are getting better at knowing the key elements that make, uh, the difference between success and not success. And oftentimes, that's really small stuff, so. But in terms of the areas, in terms of how they classify, and these are maps, you know, across the country of what's identified as, you know, different development zones, um, this step will, as Adeya said, assist us in, in our applications that are in process.
Thank you, Chief. Deputy Mayor Burbage?
I was just going to add a bit. Uh, our city has not worked with New Markets Tax Credits previous to this, um, project. And, uh, the more you work with this kind of a process of doing the research and, uh, bringing on people who do have experience with, with this process, uh, the more you learn and you become more effective in the applications. So, I'm, I'm pleased that we're going, we're proposing to go ahead with this.
And in fact, actually with, uh, Tim Johnson's assistance, we actually sent off the applications for next year's New Market Tax Credits, as well as being in the mix still for this year's allocations. Now we've got the applications out for next year as well. Is that correct?
I think the, the, the beauty of this, I think with, uh, uh, acting city attorney, Amy Jo, I think, uh, we also brought in, uh, legal experts, accountants, uh, lawyers that have done these. And this resolution is actually a draft copy of, you know, language recommended by the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, attorney that we brought on board. Uh, yes, we submitted, uh, nine applications on Friday. Just to make sure that the deadline for this entity to submit their own application to the Treasury is October first. We want to get our applications to them so that they can make our application part of their application. And I think in the discussion that we've had before, we've used the word pipeline. This is how we get our application in the pipeline. So that when those entities apply for their allocation, they will be able to identify some of the projects that we, that we are, that they are looking for funding for, and we will be identified as part of that project. I think we're, I think we're doing really well, and we're a little bit ahead of the game this time around, so.
Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you. Um, so, obviously this could help us with, um, securing the New Markets Tax Credits. But is it possible that there could be any unintended consequences? For instance, if we identify that area as, um, redevelopment, or some might read that as distressed or something, could that prohibit, um, other developers from wanting, private developers from wanting to come in and, and build in that area if they, if they're concerned about that label?
Uh, remember the language here is redevelopment zone. It's not classifying it as a depress or whatever. It's a redevelopment zone. That means the city is deciding to pump resources into that property. So, from that basis, I don't really see any downfall or any adverse effect. I'm basing our conversation with our lawyer also, I don't, you know, he doesn't see any downside to this.
Deputy Mayor Burbage, did you have any?
Um, I, I was noticing, this is focusing on the area. Could you describe the parameters of the area that we're talking about for the redevelopment?
Based on which I'm not really sure how they define this area currently as severely depressed. This is what they have. So the area that we're talking about is just this area here.
So north of three twentieth, west of the freeway to PAC Highway, and south of three sixteenth? Correct. Alright, Council, any questions?
Yes, I do.
Councilmember, um, Honda?
Thank you. I have two questions. Um, one, the last, uh, sentence in this says, whereas the council desires to authorize the mayor to take all actions necessary to prioritize economic redevelopment activities in the redevelopment zone. My question with that is, where does council fall on that? And would we have any say in what actions the mayor is taking? My second question is, we have a moratorium right now in this area, and what does this do to the moratorium?
Say that again, I'm sorry. Well, let, maybe just do one question at a time.
Okay.
Uh, Amy Jo, uh, in regard to, uh, authority of the mayor over the council, this give, this is give me, is this an assignment of, of, uh, extra authority to me that I would be able to do anything without council approval as a result of this?
No, it's not. The, um, the, um, economic redevelopment activities is defined earlier in the resolution itself, indicating that the goal is to attract development to the area. And that may include, um, using Section one oh eight, using New Market Tax Credits. The council has previously, um, enacted a resolution that defines what the mayor's authority is with regard to development of the PAC. So that still stands, and that controls with regard to that, those activities. As far as any redevelopment in the surrounding area, um, as far as city-owned property or city projects, council would need to authorize the mayor to do anything additional that hasn't already been authorized per the previous resolution for PAC development.
Thank you.
As far as the second question goes, um, this does not affect the moratorium in, in any way. The moratorium still stands currently and is on track for, um, proposed zoning regulations to be brought forward to you to replace that moratorium, and that, this does not affect that.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Council, any other questions? Alright, is there a, is there a motion?
Yes.
Councilmember DuKlo?
I move approval of the proposed resolution to create an economic redevelopment zone.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, the matter, the matter passes unanimously. Item T, uh, T, item B, uh, is, uh, Town Square Playground Equipment. It was carried over from the last meeting. Uh, Chief, can you tell us why, why this is on and, and what action, if any, do we need to take at this time?
Um, I am going to, uh, take this for our Park, Parks Director, uh, given the prior discussion that we had earlier this evening. But the, this has come before the, uh, Parks and Committee, and with a recommendation to authorize the use of up to fifty-six thousand dollars in Department Park CIP account to purchase playground equipment for Town Square Park, in addition, uh, to purchase trees. Uh, so this is in front, did go to the commission. Um, this, this purchase and the plans associated this would be incorporated into the NACANO work and the plan, uh, that's, uh, moving forward. Um, in addition, uh, we will incorporate the feedback that was received from council this evening, uh, in terms of the equipment being accessible and, and, uh, the concerns that were raised earlier.
Okay, so essentially, this, this would just be, this is part of what we're talking about, about what NACANO, um, has, uh, what we're gonna be having NACANO work on.
Yes, and they will have additional, uh, costs, including amenities that aren't described here, uh, that will be before council for consideration.
Alright, Councilmember Honda?
Um, I understood from my, I was at the Parks Commission meeting when this was discussed, and I understood that the trees were already covered. They were part of the contingency plan that you already had money for.
Right, right. The trees, actually, we, we, because they fall, uh, I think they were only like three hundred and fifty dollars each, and we're talking about maybe eighteen trees, the trees fell well within my, uh, authority to just purchase the trees without council. Uh, we still got, uh, input from them about, and then you, 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 we were talking about maple trees and cherry trees, a splash of, for the spring. Uh, but we're gonna, um, you know, uh, at this stage, um, yeah, so basically that was not part of this. It was just about playground equipment. So it seems to me that maybe the logical thing to do while we're waiting for NACANO, um, but public comment and NACANO to come back with their, uh, drawings is maybe we should just table this until we, uh, until those plans come back.
I would agree, because I don't think we, we don't have a plan.
Right.
We don't know what the plan's gonna cost.
Right.
It would be premature to do this.
Exactly, exactly. So is there a motion to table this until, uh, we come back with the NACANO plan?
I'll move to table.
I'll second.
Alright, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Uh, Councilmember Moore, and then Deputy Mayor Burbage?
Uh, just a logistical question for Chief and maybe the mayor or some staff. Uh, wasn't there a special deal going on with that park equipment? And the question is, by waiting, um, will we lose out on that deal?
We may. Alright, that's a good, uh, John? Cause we got like, there was like a thirty percent off, a thirty-five percent off.
Yes, they were running a, a special at the end of the, uh, at the end of the summer for thirty to forty percent. We have a good relationship with them. Uh, we may indeed lose that discount, and they may still honor it, uh, potentially, we're not sure. But we're not, there's been some, some new suggestions to look at playground equipment that might be wheelchair-friendly. So it may be best to hold and pause for a few moments and, uh, make, make the best decision based on what we really want as the plan comes through from NACANO.
And we got some great pictures from Councilmember Honda when she was back in Virginia, and, did you get those?
I did, yes.
And let's incorporate those. Let's make sure NACANO sees some of those, uh, as we move forward, cause they were, they were great suggestions. Uh, Deputy Mayor Burbage, and then, um, Councilmember Moore, and then Councilmember, okay. Deputy Mayor?
Uh, I just have a procedure question. Uh, I heard a motion to table this, and is that to a date certain, or to, to the, until the process? Does that satisfy the tabling concern?
The NACANO return?
Yeah, we just need clarification if it was a motion to table to, until the, um, the plan is in place?
Yes.
Then we have a date certain, or it will, that will suffice.
Right, that, that seems more logical sense, because that's what started this whole discussion anyway. I think that was placed, we had some discussion during our agenda setting, but I think because of the way it went last meeting, it had to be on the agenda. This way, just to comport with what had occurred in public setting before. Council, any other questions? Councilmore, Councilmember Moore, did you have?
Uh, and I'm okay with holding off, really, but the only concern or the only thought I would have is, if we can get more Bain out of our playground equipment and save some money, I, I think that's something that should be considered, but I think it sounds like there's sales going on all the time, perhaps.
And we've got a longstanding relationship with these people. Let's make sure we get it right. And that we, you know, we may end up with this, you know, wheelchair accessible, you know, uh, thing, and, and certainly make sure that, that we are able to...
And I do wanna thank, thank everybody for being sensitive to the case of making sure our parks are fully inclusive, so, uh, that is really important. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so it's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, uh, that passes. Uh, ordinance is first reading, Council Bill, uh, first reading, item A, Council Bill six fifty-six, rate structure for surface water utility rate adjustment. Uh, Will Appleton will make a, is Will here? Oh, there you are. You are so, so quiet. You kinda just moved over there.
Good evening, Mayor.
Alright, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbage, and council members. Uh, this evening, the topic before you is the adjustment of the surface water utility rate structure. Uh, and specifically, the policy question before you is, should council approve the ord, the proposed ordinance amending the storm, stormwater utility rate structure to include an increase of twelve percent beginning in two thousand fifteen and authorize an annual CIP adjusted rate increase each year thereafter? And I do have a brief, uh, presentation for you this evening. Uh, just to go over quickly the presentation outline, um, I'll just, I'll talk about the Surface Water Management Group, kind of an overview of that group, and then, uh, discuss briefly the Surface Water Management Funding. Uh, discuss the proposed rate increase, and then, uh, talk a little bit about the SWIM rate structure in comparison to other South Sound cities and jurisdictions. So, the mission of the Surface Water Utility, and I'll read directly from our comp plan here, is, is to meet all relevant federal and state stormwater-related regulatory requirements, to protect public health and safety, prevent property damage, protect, preserve, and enhance surface water and associated habitats, protect groundwater quality and quantity, and to protect and enhance surface water and sediment quality by controlling and reducing harm from urban hydrologic changes and stormwater pollutants. So, a hefty task, and, uh, as this slide depicts, there are, um, a myriad of other, uh, kind of tasks that, uh, that we accomplish through the Surface Water Utility. Uh, in order to accomplish this mission, um, just to quickly go through the structure of the Surface Water Management, uh, Utility, uh, we have essentially a, a group that does inspections. We have, uh, a group that handles all of our capital projects and does our engineering for major maintenance. We also have a water quality section within Surface Water. We have an education and outreach, uh, section within the Surface Water Management. And then we have the largest section, which is our operations and maintenance. And this, uh, diagram just kind of depicts how the staff are, are organized for the, uh, for the various, uh, areas. Additionally, the Surface Water Utility also provides partial funding for other portion, for other, um, I guess, positions within Public Works. And that's, those are described here down at the bottom. We partially fund the Public Works Director position, the Deputy Director position, uh, the admin pool. And we also, uh, help to fund the Development Services, uh, Division, specifically their senior engineer, uh, as well as a hundred percent of their inspector. And the reason for this is that a lot of what Development Services does for us, uh, as a city, is, uh, stormwater review specifically. So, the Surface Water Utility has a direct interest in that. And so with this organizational structure, we have approximately four, we have fourteen full-time staff. During the summer, we get some additional seasonal help. But what, what we're responsible for are the operations and maintenance of the Surface Water Infrastructure within the City of Federal Way. And you can see by this table here, what I intend to demonstrate is just from 1992 to 2014, just how the amount of infrastructure that we're responsible for in the city has increased pretty steadily, and in the last 10 years, probably a little more rapidly. And you can see in just about every category, there's an increase, and in some categories, it's a fairly dramatic increase in terms of the infrastructure that we're responsible for. In addition, we're responsible for any of the capital improvement projects, projects that we undertake in order to address flooding and water quality issues within the city. One of our other primary responsibilities, oftentimes thought to be even maybe the most important, is the compliance with our MPDS permit. And so this is our state permit that's handed down through the EPA and Department of Ecology. Within that, we're responsible for illicit discharge detection elimination. Our education and outreach tasking is directed through this. Monitoring is directed through this, as well as our enforcement. And so really, the MPDS permit is a very big tasking and responsibility of Surface Water Management. We also are responsible for Infrastructure Locate Program. SWIM also provides the funding for the Street Sweeping Program, which is administered by the Streets Department. And we also are responsible for conditional assessment and the mapping program. So with respect to our revenues and expenditures, essentially, looking back over the last five years, and this slide depicts where our revenues have been roughly and where our expenditures are. And what, what you can see is that they've been pretty close to equal of late. And what the utility has done, some of the variability here, most of the revenues that we have come in through our Surface Water Management fees, and then we also supplement that with grants that we're able to obtain. And our expenditures have been relatively consistent of recent times, but further back, when we had more capital improvement projects, our expenditures were much higher than they have been over the last couple of year, couple of years. So just to touch on the revenue side of this quickly. Our revenues, most of which come from our stormwater utility funds, have been essentially flat, and that's shown here in this histogram. And what this, what this is telling us is when we started as a city back in 1990 and created the Surface Water Utility initially, it was very, very small SWIM fee. And this, what I've chosen to show you here is the residential fee. And it was quickly realized that it wasn't enough to, to operate the utility and accomplish what, what its mission was set out to be. And so it was raised in 1992 fairly dramatically. And then from that time forward to present day, really, it's been very, very flat in terms of any kind of increases. In fact, a few little bumps here, as shown on this table, are just utility tax adjustments. There, there was one increase in 2003 of approximately 6%. So again, shown in this table, it's a little busy here, but the takeaway is maybe down here at the bottom on the total residential fee, 1990, it was $30 essentially, 1992, 74, 2003, 83. And present day, 2014, it's currently $85 per year per resident. And so in order to, to be able to manage this kind of a revenue stream, we've, SWIM has taken some, some steps on the expenditure side. Those things that we have some control over, for example, staffing. Staffing levels have been held pretty constant since 2003. We've also, over the last five years, have shifted a lot of our design work from consultants to in-house, and we've been able to save money doing that, as well as construction management using in-house staff. This, the capital improvement program has been reduced. We just recently adopted a new CIP, but prior to that, our capital improvement program was really slowing down, which allowed us to save money that we otherwise would have expended. We've, we've taken kind of a reactive approach up till now on infrastructure repair, but we're finding, based on conditional assessments, that that perhaps isn't the best approach moving forward. And we've had aggressive cost control in pursuit of grants within Surface Water and Public Works, for that matter. And we've attempted to be innovative where, where we're able to in terms of cost savings. There are other impacts to expenditures which we really don't have much control over. Those include what the inflation rate is. It's been relatively low in the past, which has been good. There has been an economic slowdown, which has also in some ways benefited us and allowed us to continue with the revenue structure as it is. But there are mandates that we don't have any control of that have been gradually increasing our expenditures, and those include the MPDS permit requirements, which tend to just increase every year, both in terms of what we're required to do and the costs associated with it. We now have a mandated one-call program, which we need to participate in, which we haven't in the past. And then there's some other kind of outlier things out there, which we really don't know exactly what the costs are yet. One of them I pointed out here is the new fish consumption rules. And so where this really leaves us in terms of a financial projection is depicted in this graph. The yellow line represents what, what Surface Water needs to maintain with respect to emergency and operational reserve requirements. It's approximately $1 million. And the blue line here is showing our projected ending fund balance. And you can see here, over 2009, 10, and 11, pretty flat. And we've, this rise in our ending fund balance has been primarily due to a lot of success with respect to grants. We've also, as I said, an important thing to remember here is we really are, our capital program has been very, very reduced during this period of time, so we've seen actually an accumulation of funding. However, once we, once we get to this point and we incorporate the newly adopted CIP program, and we look at basically carrying out the same level of service that we have been, that's where we start to see a real falloff in our ending fund balances, where under the current revenue structure, we would expect to drop below our emergency reserves in 2019 timeframe. And so in order to avoid this, and to implement, to maintain our current level of service and remain in compliance with our MPDS permit, and to implement the approved CIP over the next eight years, a rate increase is recommended. So once we had evaluated and gotten to this point, we looked at three different possible rate increase scenarios. A 7.5% increase, a 10% increase, and a 12% increase. And each one of these increases also included an annual CPI, Consumer Price Index inflator, each year. And so when we take these rate increases into consideration, along with the new adopted CIP and maintaining our existing level of service, what you see, what, what we get is a recommendation essentially for a 12% increase with, and I had assumed during this analysis, a 2% CPI. And essentially, what that does is allows us to implement our capital program, maintain our current level of service out to 2022 timeframe. And the reason all of the sudden we see a big rebound right at 2022 is, in theory, at that point, we've completed our capital program. We, assuming, haven't, if, if we assume that we haven't adopted any new capital projects, then that's where we start to see a real increase in the unallocated reserves in SWIM. However, as we move forward in time, we would expect to identify new capital projects, and this, this part of the curve would change, but in theory, not drop below the $1 million reserve threshold. And so when we take a look at these proposed rate increases relative to where we are today and where other South King County cities and jurisdictions are, we get this, this graphic. And what's shown here is, this is existing residential SWIM fee is what I chose to use for comparison basis for this. And, and then each one of these in red represents the, the Federal Way amount with the, the increase here. So 7, 7.5% increase, a 10, and a 12% increase. And I guess the takeaway from this is to recognize that even with the 12% increase, the highest proposed, the City of Federal Way still, in the South Sound, has one of, if not the lowest, Surface Water Utility Rate. And so this is, again, is for the 2014 residential fee per parcel, per year. The next, the next comparison that we chose to do was to look at six different prominent businesses or entities within Federal Way, and to essentially look at commercial sites, and to analyze those based on the proposed increase, and then also be able to compare those to other cities. So very quickly here, if we just consider the first column here, it's very busy, but I think it'll become very clear quickly. If we looked at Sea-Tac Mall, and we own Sea-Tac Mall in Seattle, based on Seattle rates, they would pay $126,000 a year for Surface Water Utilities. And in Federal Way, currently, they pay $36,000 or 30, closer to $37,000 a year. And then just below that, I've shown what the, the impact would be for the various increases. So at a 12% increase, the mall would then be responsible for $41,200 annually. And then what we did was essentially ranked with, you know, where Federal Way fell compared to these other jurisdictions. And you can see that even with our increase, we're still one of the least expensive cities with respect to stormwater utility rates in the South Sound, commercial rates. And so commercial rates are a little bit different than our residential. They're more, they're dependent upon the amount of impervious for the site, as opposed to our residential fees, which are simply per resident. So this is, the commercial rates are influenced by how much impervious the site has. And so one other thing, analysis that I, that I did here was to compare the City of Federal Way and our stormwater fees relative to other jurisdictions for the same bag of stormwater infrastructure, I guess is the best way to describe it. So in the City of Kent, for their bag of stormwater infrastructure, for the same one, they collect approximately $94.20. For that same bag in the City of Federal Way, we collect currently $28.20. And so really, the takeaway from this is trying to compare apples to apples. It just further demonstrates that even with our rate increase, that the City of Federal Way would be still among, if not the lowest, with respect to stormwater infrastructure fees. And so with that, to carry out the Surface Water Utilities' mission, including continuing to provide an acceptable level of service, meeting all current MPDS Phase 2 permit requirements, addressing aging infrastructure, implementing the approved CIP program, providing state mandated utility locates, remaining eligible and competitive with respect to grant opportunities. And here, the idea that it's, you have to have money in your pocket oftentimes to be able to, to make the matching amounts and to be, to be able to apply for those grants. And then preparing for future state and federal requirements. Staff and the mayor is recommending that a rate increase of 12% be implemented in 2015, followed by an annual rate increase tied to the June CPI thereafter. And with that, that's the end of my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Maloney.
I just want to thank you for this really in-depth overview. When you gave it at land use, I was very impressed. It's just, you know, it really explains a lot, and it helped me understand it. And I think, I think it's a very measured approach, and I appreciate that as well. And I'd like to suggest that regardless of what we do here, and I support the 12%, but regard, in addition to that, as we look to continue to market and do economic development, we might, we might, we might, we might use this to market to developers, because it's a big differentiator. It's huge, in my, in my mind.
Yeah. Good point. Yeah.
Question?
What she said. Councilmember Sethadossa.
Yeah, just curious, earlier, we had the Presentation on Critical Areas Ordinance, the update, and I'm wondering, is there correlation, or do they, does any of these funds go to support any of that, and how?
Right, so, yes, Surface Water, one of our missions within Surface Water Management is to protect and preserve our riparian habitats and our surface water assets, as well as groundwater. And so a portion of what we do, some of the capital projects actually that we have proposed, do just that. So we're looking to protect and preserve and to promote through education and outreach. So I, I think, I hope that answers your question, but yeah, we are intimately involved with, with that aspect.
Thank you.
All right, Counsel, any other questions? All right. Would the deputy city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 656, Rate Structure for Surface Water Utility Rate Adjustment, An Ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, Amending the Rate Structure for the Storm and Surface Water Utility by 12% and Adding an Annual CPI Adjusted Rate Increase Thereafter.
All right, Councilmember Selsky.
I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the September 16, 2014 City Council Meeting for enactment.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The matter passes unanimously. Second reading, Council Bill 654, Zayo Group LLC Franchise Agreement. Would the deputy city clerk please read the ordinance title?
An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Federal Way, Washington, Amending the Non-Exclusives Franchise Granted to Zayo Group LLC to Occupy Rights of Way in the City of Federal Way, Washington, Within the Specified Franchise Area for the Purposes of Installing Fiber Optic Network Within and Through the City of Federal Way.
Councilmember DuClo.
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Maloney?
No.
Oh, okay. Everybody's just got there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Council reports, Councilmember DuClo.
You're so lucky, I have no report tonight.
All right, Councilmember Moore.
Oh, that put me on the spot there. Okay. Yesterday was Labor Day. And obviously, Labor Day is a movement and is dedicated to the social and economic achievement of workers. Labor Day was started in Oregon, and it was the first, I'm sorry, that was the first state that celebrated this holiday, which was on February 21st, 1887. And by that time, by the time it became a federal holiday in 1894, 30 states started celebrating Labor Day. I thought this was important to share, Mr. Mayor, because Labor Day is really important. It's, it's a time for us to recognize our men and women that participate in specific type of jobs, and I wanted to take the time to recognize that, because that was yesterday. The second thing I wanted to report is how excited I am of the future potential resolution on workplace and work, employment services in the workplace. And it's something I'm looking forward to, I'm looking forward to working with my colleagues on this, working, looking forward to working with the public on this, and as well with the mayor's office. And I certainly look forward to feedback and thoughts. And just really wanted to take the time to say thank you for this. So with that being said, that's my report.
All right, Councilmember Selsky.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell. Yes, we have a really important event coming up next Tuesday, the 9th of September. This is the Reach Out Homeless Shelter. This is the Reach Out Homeless Shelter Annual Breakfast. It's their biggest fundraiser of the year. And as probably most everybody knows, the Reach Out provides shelter for our homeless in the area during the winter months, the cold winter months. And this breakfast is really important to provide the funds so that we can shelter as many homeless as possible. And also, it provides counseling services and other type services to help. So that breakfast is next, like I said, next Tuesday morning at 7:00 at the Christian Faith Center right here in Federal Way, and I just hope everybody can come and join in and help to provide funding for this worthy, worthy cause in our city. Secondly, the land use, next Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting is next Monday, the 8th of September at 5:30 here in Council Chambers, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Moselski, thank you for mentioning the Reach Out Breakfast. The city is sponsoring two tables, and we've, I made the decision to support the group at a $1,000 level this year. And so we're going to have, we're going to have several tables of management team, council members, and police staff as well. So Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. I'd like to talk about three items. The first is contract for services. If you are a group that performs in Federal Way musically or theater or what have you, this is a time of year where you apply for contract for services. And this is the one grant in the city of Federal Way that you actually have to come to a workshop to qualify for it. It's a little bit different than other grants. This started a few years ago after we were having some issues with not everyone filling out the application correctly. So we developed a workshop. The workshop this year is set for Wednesday, September 10th, from 6:00 to 7:00. It's a requirement to attend the workshop to apply for contract for services funding. Applications are due on October 6th at 5:00 p.m. And once you come to the workshop, you can get your questions answered and apply for money from the city to help support your group. The Chili Cook-Off is coming up. It's September 27th at the Farmer's Market. Last year, I'm not sure who won. Chief, do you remember who won last year?
I know who won the basketball game. And I think the fire department won the Chili Cook-Off.
Did they? I thought we did.
We're going to claim it back.
I thought we did. But anyway, if you remember, last year at the Chili Cook-Off, it rained, and we had flooding in the streets. It was not a pleasant day, except we had great chili. This year, it's already rained. Last Saturday, it rained at the Farmer's Market. It wasn't very pleasant for a few hours, so it's not going to rain on October, September 27th. So anyway, tickets are available. We encourage people to support the fire department or the police department. Money goes to good causes, and that's Farmer's Market, September 27th. The next Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee meeting is next Tuesday, September 9th at 5:00. That's a new time. We have been meeting at 5:30, but the new time is now 5:00, and everyone is welcome. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Maloney.
Okay, well, thank you. So as you've all heard, the city has hired a new economic development director, Tim Johnson, and we've been anxiously awaiting for him, for his arrival. He'll be here September 15th. And I mention that because we, I personally have been anxiously awaiting him as well because he will be, we will be transitioning the rebranding initiative and the college initiative over to his, to his oversight, basically. With the, I believe the committee members will still be participating, but it's, those are, you know, those are staff, really staff duties, and I've been happy to be working with Councilmember DuKlo and Councilmember Honda with the support of Jerry Lynn Clark here at the city on the rebranding initiative. And I think that we've really started, we've gotten a little, a little bit of traction going. We've got the notebooks out in the community, and I'm hearing and reading wonderful things in there. It's not all positive, but that's what we need to hear, is the positive and the negative. But for the most part, it's pretty positive, and it's good to, it's good to hear the voices for, from community members. So we'll collect those up and we'll deliver those to Tim, and he will work on surveys, and we do have some focus groups that he'll be working on and so forth. So, but it's been a good, a good team that has come together, and so I'm happy to transition that over. On the college initiative, I think it was mentioned in the paper the other day that WSU, Central, and a couple of others have expressed interest in exploring this space with us, and so Tim will pick that up, and we have put together a team. And so I just want to also just kind of publicly thank two other people who have been working on the team, and that's former council member Diana Noble Goleford and community member Kelly Evans, who does a lot of public affairs work. So that's kind of it for now, but I just wanted to thank the entire council for their support on these two initiatives, and it's going to be really great when we move forward with the new economic development director. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney, for all your work on that. And we've really teed up a good discussion on this. We're going to move forward, and we're certainly going to utilize the efforts and energies of our, the subcommittee. Councilmember DuKlo, Councilmember Honda, thank you as well. Done a tremendous amount of work. We're pointing in the right direction, and we're just going to link up arms and keep moving. So thank you very much. Councilmember Sephedosan.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much to report on, except to say that next Thursday, September 11th, is Ethiopian New Year, so I just want to say Happy New Year to all my fellow Ethiopians in this community. I know it's early, but this is my opportunity before it happens, so just wanted to say that.
Very good. Thank you very much. Oh, before I turn this over to the deputy mayor, I do need to remind everybody, for those listening at home, that we have a meet and greet for city attorney interviewees this Thursday here at City Hall at 6:00 p.m. And now I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Hervich.
Thank you. I went to a youth homelessness roundtable last week, and we had both, representation by both our Congressman Adam Smith and Congressman Steve, Dave Reichert. And there were also representatives from the various agencies throughout King County, which provide various kinds of resources for homeless youth. And it was a very interesting roundtable. There were some, also some clients of these agencies, who, some young people who spoke and did just a very fine job of indicating the resources, the importance of these resources. And I expect we'll be hearing more from these folks in the near future. I also wanted to mention that next week is the ribbon cutting for the Cafe Darte Roasting Company in Federal Way and on 9th South, approximately across from the entrance to St. Francis Hospital. And then also, also related to the county, I want to mention just a couple of comments on the public health facility. I want to emphasize that I believe very firmly that it's essential for us to see that the services are maintained on a seamless basis, that we do not lose this continuity of these essential services to our residents in Federal Way. However, I'll be looking for, in the future, some focus on the countywide fairness issues that are implied with closing, the potential closing of a few of our facilities that provide such important services. We need to make sure that there is an equity provided because all of the taxpayers in King County, including the taxpayers in Federal Way, help to provide those services along with others that the county provides. And so I believe that there are some very important equity issues that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Agreed wholeheartedly. Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Waited before 10 o'clock.
Yeah, two minutes is spared.